Good evening. It is seven o'clock. Today is Monday, June 16th, 2025. We are in the boardroom. And before I call this meeting of the school board to order, I would like to recognize the tragic events of our past weekend and have a moment of silence. Thank you. And now, I will call this meeting of the Robbinsdale Area Schools to order. And the first thing on the agenda is roll call.
Thank you, Director Bassett. Here. Renee Bowman is here. Chair Evans Becker.
I am here.
Director Helen Brand.
Here.
Director Holmes.
Here.
Director Long.
Here.
Director Wu To.
Here.
Seven, all seven are present. Oh, and excuse me. Sorry, Dr. Stallow. Your name isn't on the list, I'm sorry.
Superintendent Stallow, thank goodness you're here. All right, we are all here. And so it is time for us to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Moved by Director Holmes, seconded by Director Helen Brand. All in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. We have an agenda. Ooh, yes, moving right along. All right, first thing up. Ardell Proud, take it away Superintendent Stallow.
Well, this evening, I'm actually going to be handing it over to Executive Director Anthony Williams. And as I do that, we get an opportunity tonight to hear from some brilliant leaders who are responsible in a large part for the coordination of our full-service community schools. Before they kick off, I just want to share the absolute delight that I've had in learning more about our full-service of community schools, as well as the partnerships, especially over the last couple of weeks since the national conference that was held in Minneapolis and the opportunity that we had to host several tours. Absolutely amazing work. And I want to just preface this this presentation with gratitude and thank you for everything that you do and your teams and all of our partners do. So with that, I'll hand it over to you, Anthony.
Thank you Superintendent Stallow. Chair Evans Becker, members of the board. I try to speak clearly. I did just have a surgery on my mouth on Friday, so I'll try to speak as clear as I can this evening. But I'm glad to present, you know, the work of the full-service community schools that we've had here in Robbinsdale. First, I'll start our land acknowledgement. And we acknowledge Robbinsdale Area Schools as located on the homelands of the Dakota and Ojibwe people. We recognize the painful history of genocide and forced assimilation of the indigenous inhabitants of this land. We honor and respect the many indigenous peoples who live on and hold sacred these lands. And we stand with members of these nations to fight injustice in all of its forms. We uphold the preservation of Dakota and Ojibwe languages, land-based education, and tribal sovereignty. The purpose of tonight's meeting, you know, it's really just to share the work that's been happening around the district, when it comes to full-service community schools. This is now, you know, this is now our third, well, going into our fourth year. Back in 21, 22, we received a grant from MDE. It's a federal pass-through of roughly $1.2 million to begin the full-service community schools work in Robbinsdale Middle School, Sandberg Learning Center, because we included Sandberg and Hightower together, as well as Cooper High School in that work. During, for the implementation process, what was key was that we hired, each site had to have a full-time community schools coordinator. They had to establish a site leadership team, which is made up of building administration, social workers, students, parents, as well as the coordinator and the liaison. So we have a liaison in our model as well. The first thing that they were tasked to do is conduct some asset mapping, which figure out what the assets are in the community, external asset mapping, and then also some of the internal asset mapping that was necessary for those individual schools, and then conduct the needs assessment. With that needs assessment, they sent out surveys to staff, individual surveys to staff, students, and families to identify the needs of the school as they were developing their full-service plan. So that's sort of the implementation process that we had there. The four pillars of the full-service model include expanded learning time and opportunities, collaborative leadership and practice, active family and community engagement, and integrated student supports. As you, as we, you know, the team comes up, you know, and presents tonight, you'll hear more about sort of, you know, it's not broken down by individual pillar, but you'll hear about some of the work that they've done and how they've impacted these areas. I talked about that needs assessment. This was, this is an example, but this is actual, actual data that we received from two of our, you know, two different needs assessments. One was for Cooper High School. I don't have it labeled. I don't believe, one's for Cooper High School, one's for RMS. But each individual site had, had conducted a needs assessment. The most important needs that came up during that time was emotional and social well-being was a top identifier. Enrichment programs before and after school, resources for clothing and personal hygiene, healthcare services and support, and academic assistance and tutoring services. Those were the top six needs to identify on the initial needs assessment. These do, they do conduct the needs assessment ongoing, so they do one that first year. You know, they develop a plan. They monitor the plan with their site leadership team, with the administration, and then they, and then they conduct the follow-up needs assessment as well. This is just the example of what we could, what we done that first year. I'm gonna introduce my team while, you know, here. So I have Naisha Smith here. She was the full-service community schools coordinator at RMS. And I have Lakia McGahey here, who, who's the full-service community schools coordinator. She's, she's both been at Cooper and at Sandberg, so she's bounced around, but she's, she's gonna be at Cooper for next year. She's been a good team player and worked out, you know. Everybody who we started with is still here with us, but they've all contributed, you know, tremendously to this work. And I also want to introduce Jackie Starr back there, who's our family liaison at Cooper. I call her the number one hugger in the district because she gives, she gives our hugs and the students, the students appreciate that everywhere I'm at. So, but I want to pass it over to Naisha to talk about collaborative leadership and how that shows up.
Hello, I'm Naisha Smith. As Anthony said, I am the coordinator at Robbinsdale Middle School. So for some of the collaborative leaderships and some of the collaborations we have within the district where we worked with the curriculum and instruction to focus on the academic support and after-school enrichment opportunities through like our targeted services programs, the multilingual programs, offering translation services to families during our family night and events, nutrition services for snacks, and also making sure our food is safe when we do have the family nights. Achievement and integration collaborating, collaborating with them to provide valuable resources and partnering to support cultural relevant student affinity spaces like our Latinx Girl Scout troop that happens at RMS. Our site leadership team, Anthony talked about that. That's composed of teachers, administrators, counselors, PLCs, students, parents. And so that team comes together and we actually define the desired outcomes for the site. And we work together to make sure it's aligned so that we are integrating those services within the school. Right? One of, also the other key requirements that Anthony talked about is making sure that we have community collaboration. So we work with community partners to come in. So after we did those needs assessment, we went out to find community partners that could help bring the resources into our schools. So I'll just highlight a few of those. One is that all of our staff was trained in youth mental health first aid. So we're all youth mental health first aid responders. And that was with the National Council of Mental Health Wellbeing. Our partnership with Ready, Set, Smile began in just two schools three years ago, serving fewer than 20 scholars. This past year alone, they reached 327 students across six of our elementary schools. We're adding three more schools next year. I'm excited about that. They identified 384 cavities, treating over 204 of them, and placed more than 275 sealants right in the school, in the classrooms, in special classrooms. They didn't go while they were doing. They also made 50 non-urgent referrals, 30 urgent referrals, and 28 orthodontic referrals. Hennessy Health provided vaccines for our scholars during our family nights and also before school started so our scholars could be ready for school. Our family liaisons were trained and certified and mentored to help our families have access to health coverage, especially after the pandemic, when they had to recertify after so many years. A lot of families lost coverage. And then Every Meal delivered weekend meal bags to our scholars that were in need for an entire year at some of our schools. So those are some of the partners that we had that kind of came or that were on the outside for the resources. Some partners we actually brought into our school day. And some of those were Boys of Hope, Girls Taking Action. They provided weekly mentorship sessions for the last three years to our scholars. They, that constant role model and guidance was great for our scholars, but they also brought them on field trips. They went to base camp for team building. They also took them to Northrup Ballet to expose them to the arts. We had Junior Achievement and Above the Edge. They brought the real-world experience right to the scholars. And through our before and after school enrichment programs, we were able to offer over 30 different enrichment classes, which included tutoring in both English and Spanish, financial literacy, weightlifting, and the culinary arts, which the scholars were able to visit Travell right in Robbinsdale, and they got to have a working lunch where they made their own pizzas. They met with the owner and talked about restaurant ownership and just entrepreneurship in totality. And our students also had the opportunity to engage in competitive academic activities through the partnership with Minnesota Urban Debate League and Augsburg College, which I'm proud to say RMS team proudly brought home the Minnesota Urban Debate League City Championship for the rookie team. Yay! Those are just some of our community partners.
Good evening. I am Lakia McGahey. As Naisha and Anthony said, I am part of the full-service community schools team. I have been at Sandberg for the last two school years and also Cooper, starting again in February. I started out as a family liaison at Cooper, so I'm super excited to continue on with the work back at Cooper. One part of the full-service model that is important is family engagement. We know that when our students are supported, supported, and our families are involved, they are likely to do better. You know, they are more likely to be successful. Building strong family engagement provides us with the ability to provide our families with holistic supports that are relevant to their needs. We, we love inviting our families in and getting to know them, being authentic and real, and getting to know their situations and their stories so that we can really build an open and honest and trusting relationship so that, you know, they will share their lives with us and they'll be honest, like, hey, I'm struggling. I need this, I need that. If we are not authentic and really open to them and showing them who we are as people and welcoming them and seeing them for who they are, then they're not gonna be, come tell us what they need, right? And so that kind of defeats the whole purpose for full service. So, family engagement creates opportunities for parent collaboration and also informed decision-making in their students' educational journey. Strong family engagement creates supportive, a supportive environment that connects education with community resources, which will help our students succeed. Some of our family engagement events we learned through conducting our needs assessments and our surveys throughout the year. The families want fun events. They want informational events. They want to come in and feel connected and build relationships and be a community. I always tell people, full service is the bridge to the village, right? We grew up on that, the mentality that it takes a village to raise a child. Full service is that bridge. We are the bridge to the resources, to the schools, to the families, to the heart, right? I like to say full service is the heart. I'm very heart-led. I'll tell you. Because Jackie's a hugger. I love the kids too. Some of the events that we've had have been bingo nights. They love those. Those are like big events to draw families in. They play bingo, they get the prizes, they want to stay and connect. I met this family last school year during one of our bingo nights. They were an immigrant family. They had come in, had played bingo. The mom did not speak a lick of English. You know, the dad had, had known some. The students were kind of translating for them. But after, they came up to me and they were so excited and they're like, oh my goodness, can we take pictures with you? We don't have this back home, whatever, blah, blah, blah. So I'm like, sure. I hate pictures, mind you. I'm like, okay, you know, my hair was wild and my shirt was crazy, you know. So I'm like, okay, let's take a picture. So we did. And, you know, I sat and communicated with them for a little bit, learned some about them. School year goes on. I have another event. The family comes back. And they're like, oh, Ms. Kia, we love you. You know, we're so happy you're doing another bingo night event. And so I had learned then that the mother was looking for English classes. You know, back home, she was a teacher. But here, her credentials just didn't hold up, right? So I'm like, okay, I know where I'm gonna connect you to, the Crystal Learning Center. So I did. I gave them all the information. They're like, great. So I seen them at another family event. They said, ah, Ms. Kia, guess what? I said, what? I'm so happy to see you guys. I'm so glad you're here. They said, I can't remember the woman's name, but they said, she has now been taking classes, English learning classes at the Crystal Learning Center for three weeks, and she is also learning to drive. I was like, oh my goodness, that is a win, right? So that was like very touching for me that I could help impact a family that big, you know? That was great. So then I seen them again at another family event. And they brought more friends of theirs, more immigrant families in. And they came and they got to get connected to more resources. I sent them home with a bunch of Every Meal bags that day. Like, okay, you need it, I got you, no worries. So that was one. We had a winter wonderland for the last two winters. We didn't do it this winter, but two years in a row, we had a winter wonderland family engagement night. Families could come, eat some yummy catered food from Milton's. They were able to get winter gear, hats, scarves, mittens, you name it. Have fun with some activities. We had, what, over 400 families come. We were able to provide vaccines and other resources connected to early learning. Another family engagement night was the renters and home buyers workshops. So we know that our families not only want to have fun when they come be with us, right? But they also want to learn. They want to be connected to things that are, that will help them along their journey. So we've had renters workshops, home buyers workshops. And hopefully, Miss Jackie's plan is to do a credit repair workshop next year. So that's one of the big things coming. Another thing that I would like to highlight, a partnership is Tickets for Kids. This is one of my favorites because it provides opportunities for exposure for our students. They might not have the opportunity to go to a museum or go to an art show or, you know, go to a basketball game, the Timberwolves, you know, the Lakers, whoever. They get these opportunities for free. We have provided over 600 tickets, 600 tickets for our families to go and attend these events that they might not have the opportunity to see. And it's all free. The only thing they have to do is just show up. I've had good feedback from our students, you know? Kids like basketball, they like music, you know? They want to see what's out here, and they need to. So how, you know, how do you know what you like if you don't see the world and see different programming and activities and fun? So that was a fun one for me. I, I love that. What else? Oh, I have a clicker, sorry. I'm a little nervous. Speaking in public is... So this is some of our data revolving around our family engagement. So, from the three years that we have been in the schools, we have provided over 16,000 items, whether that's socks, hygiene, toothbrushes, hats, mittens, shoes, coats, school supplies, backpacks, you name it. Food resources, that is amazing. In just three years, we have been able to do something like that. Community engagement. In all of the events that we have had, whether it's family nights, it's, you know, our enrichments, we have served and had over 5,632 people participate and 42 of our amazing Ardell staff. You know, that is great. We have to start somewhere, right? So I can appreciate that. The more we educate our, our community on full service, we'll get there, right? Some of our key accomplishments, I want to highlight one of mine that I loved so much was Junior Achievement. At Sandberg this last year, we partnered with Junior Achievement for financial literacy. Our sixth graders participated in Biz Town and the eighth graders participated in Finance Park. They were able to, you know, implement the curriculum and learn the curriculum in their school day. And then, in April, we were able to go and visit Junior Achievement. And the kids had a great time learning all the inner workings of town and business and, and all of that. All, everything that they learned in class, they got to act it out. So that is something I am proud of because it is important to have those financial literacy skills growing up, you know? It helps eliminate some of that struggle later in life. I would also like to highlight the, the Minnesota Urban Debate League partnered with us at the middle schools to provide a debate team at both schools. And as Naisha said, Robbinsdale Middle won the, won the award, which is great. I would also like to highlight at Cooper, the Black Student Empowerment Summit. That is the wonderful picture here. We had Mr. Jason Soul come in and speak to our students about the prison to pipeline, right? Prison to PhD, prison to PhD, sorry. I got a little excited. And he really came and got to connect with the students. He told them his story. And also, you know, hung out with them afterwards, gave them some really cool hoodies. The kids still ask for those hoodies. So yeah, we've done great works. We have laundry and hygiene resources in each of our sites. We also have our before and after school enrichments. You know, it gives kids a place to be while their parents have to go to work. It keeps them off the streets. It keeps them safe. And so I really enjoy that part of our work because our students need that. You know, it's about opportunities and making sure that they're successful, not only at little people's stage or adult's stage, but this is a really imperative time for them in this age group. So that's some of the works that we've done. I hope you all enjoy.
All right, well, as we transition over just, Dr. Stallow already talked about the national conference. One thing I want to say is, you know, even prior to the national conference and going back to that implementation, anytime you're introducing a new model, you know, this isn't, you know, just a new program. This was a new model to those schools. You know, it took a lot of work from this staff, from the administration staff, from the instructional staff. You know, really, we talk about, you know, they know my three things are, first, we're changing the hearts, then we're changing the minds, and then we're changing the culture. And that's what they really worked these last three years, you know, to do within those buildings and really to, you know, to grow the program. Naisha talked about how even with Ready, Set, Smile, it was 20 students year one. And there's people who wanted to say, man, it's not really working. But then we were in year three and we're 300-plus students served. We're expanding across the district. You know, so those are things that really took that change in the hearts, changed the minds, and now changing the culture, right? To get to where we want to be when we talk about being a full-service, you know, district, really. You know, there are, you know, how much time I got, Director Long? I got a couple more.
Time's up.
Don't ask her. We did the 2025 conference. That was great. Dr. Stallow touched on that. I won't read all of these. These are just a couple of the testimonials, testimonies from, from teachers and students who have, you know, experienced the full-service model. You know, you have that, and then, and then that's there. And I guess we don't have any time for questions.
Thank you. I do have one question. I have a question. This is just amazing. I'm just wondering, would it ever be possible to have every school be a community school?
So I think that would be, that would be the goal. I will say, the, the key thing about being a full-service community school is you have to have an onsite, full-time coordinator, right? So while that, you know, which, which, there's a financial cost to that. But that doesn't mean that we can't, and we are working within our strategic plan myself, and, you know, I'm always working with the team, you know. That doesn't mean we can't implement parts of the model into the, into the, into what we do every single day, right? Every, every building can feel like a full-service community school, but if you don't have that, technically, if you don't have a coordinator, you won't be a full-service community school. I do want to also, you know, I talked about the grant, right? You know, it's just, we've got a $1.2 million grant three years ago. That grant has since run out. We did apply for the expansion grant. We only got funded for Cooper, which was just this past, this past spring. You know, Mel was part of the governor, the governor's, you know, bill last year. So what we're looking at now is how do we continue the work? You know, not just RMS, not just a Sandberg. While it may look different, the work is still there. A lot of the partners that we, that we've brought in have been free. You know, that, that's been, that's been the strongest part. You talk about sustainability before you can even talk about suspension. So a lot of the partners we brought in were, were free. You know, they, they love to work with us. I know they, they talked about, you know, Boys of Hope, Girls Taking Action. You know, one of our major partners has been Hennessy County. You know, they provided calming carts for every one of our secondary schools. They provided funding and training for calming carts for every one of our secondary schools. They've invested in mental health things. So, you know, there's ways to sustain first and then expand. We are looking at that within the framework of our strategic plan.
Thank you. Director Bassett?
Very quickly, thank you. I just want to say, I had the opportunity to go to the, the national conference of community schools was here in Minnesota. And so, of course, I missed that up. So I went and I was able to come over to RMS. So I went and I was able to come over to RMS and I wish I could have got to Cooper too, but I was so impressed by the community partnerships. They were all there. They gave presentations. They were in a panel. And, uh, then I went to this literary luncheon last weekend and here's the Junior Achievement lady, Dr., I can't remember what her last name was, but she was there and she was singing your praises to all the sorority sisters who was there, you know? So let me just let you know that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Great work.
Director Holmes?
I just wanted to say, you were talking about, um, educating the community and you all did a fabulous job of explaining what this program does and how it serves our students. I hope people are listening and realizing this is excellent to have in our schools. We shouldn't feel threatened by it. It's not taking away from anything. This is amazing. As far as only being funded for Cooper, how is that leaving the middle schools then for supports this next year?
So, um, funding ran out for the middle schools even actually last year. We maintained it as, at its current state for a year, you know, as staff transitioned. We did not refill those positions, but we do have a plan once again to, uh, to offer those supports, not just at those two middle schools, but to broaden the net, you know? So we're working on, on some things strategically to continue to offer those supports. I'm leveraging the internal partnerships, not only the external, you know, because we can, you know, somebody here earlier said, you know, uh, we're stronger together. So we can definitely do these things collectively. They talked about that, um, like I think on slide three, some of those internal partnerships, that, that's what we'll do to continue the work.
Is one of those partnerships that's free and continuing the dental service by chance?
Yes. They're free and expanding.
Good to hear.
And it's horrific. And there's others. That was just
No, I, just what you mentioned, that's a lot of students served, so thank you.
Director Bowman?
I just want to thank you for your excitement about your program, your excitement for your students and your excitement for what you do every day really was shining through in your presentation. And it makes me want to turn around and come and be part of your, your day-to-day situation because it just seems like a happy place to be. So in today's world, that's probably just as important as anything else. So thank you for bringing your enthusiasm and your smiles to our students. I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Very impressive. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Right. Um, Superintendent Report.
Excellent. Uh, that is going to be a hard report to follow. Thank you again very much. Thank you and good evening, uh, Chair Evans Becker and School Board Directors at Robbinsdale Area Schools. Our mission is to inspire and educate all learners to develop their unique potential and positively contribute to their community. And tonight I'd like to highlight some of the work in which we've been engaged. Certainly in our priority theme of academic achievement and student engagement and wellness, um, I want to share this video as a celebration of the collective commitment from our Robbinsdale Area Schools community to support our students on their journey to graduation.
Today's graduation and I am feeling wistful. I'm looking at people around me and feeling so glad they're able to graduate alongside me.
Finally gonna say thank you to my parents for the support.
I am personally nerve-wracked yet excited for the possibilities for the future because I've been waiting for this day for a long time.
This is an experience that everyone looks forward to. So the excitement is very high, full of anxiety and I'm glad to be here today.
I'm feeling nerves, but overall I'm feeling really excited and just ready. I'm ready.
I'm feeling good, well-accomplished, a little nervous, but overall very good.
We've grown, adapted, and we've proven that we are not too ready for change. We welcome.
Been nervous. This has been a long time coming. I was originally supposed to graduate in 2018. Glad to get to where I am today.
Shout out to my friends. I have my bag, um, Mac Anthony, my mom, Brenice Mensah, and yeah, to myself for getting it done.
My cousins, they made sure I got my work done and like pushed me to finish.
I'm a first-generation high school graduate, so I'm up here making my parents proud. They pushed me through. They motivated me through everything. Even when it got really hard, they still motivated me and they were my rock throughout everything.
I've been through a very rough patch in my life, so for me to finally get this diploma, you know, I'm gonna act a little out.
I choose something that I've always wanted to achieve and to the next generation of RCT. If you have a goal, achieve it. If you have a dream, achieve it.
After high school, I've been going to St. Olaf College for chemistry. My ultimate goal is to do research in chemistry, to at least help one person, be it save their lives or just make their lives even just a little bit more convenient.
Currently, I'm deciding between the University of Southern California and Boston University. I would be, be a pre-med student majoring in biology and I plan to become a surgeon.
I'm looking to go into the recovery field of talking to addicts and letting them know that there is a way out and that we're all worth something and might as well find it.
Always remember that your voice matters, your story matters. I wish for you unwavering confidence and relentless courage to trust yourself and to listen to your voice as you use it to make the world a better place.
Each student has walked their own unique road and that road that's forward is also unique. And I, I want them to be confident and competent and joyful in what they do and recognize that they can do anything they set their mind to as long as they trust themselves and have a lot of amazing people around them to support them.
Nice.
Consumers are on the move.
Lots of, uh, lots of emotion in that video, lots to celebrate. Um, as we move to the next slide, in order for us to ensure that that positive student experience results in graduation for all of our students, um, as well as so much other positive impact, we need to take time to invest in our, our teachers, our staff and our leaders to learn together, to review data, to reflect at the end of the year and to set plans forward for continuous improvement. Last Tuesday, we spent the day doing this with our system leaders. And on Thursday, we brought members of all of our building instructional leadership teams together to redo, review data, school improvement plans, and begin planning for next year. In the strategic theme of collaboration and partnership in service, uh, to our students, the Reimagine Ardell Vision 2030 Community Team will be spending the day together tomorrow, visiting several school districts, touring buildings, and seeing different learning spaces. As we listen and learn what our students want, need, and deserve, our goal is to provide an opportunity for the team to learn more about how the physical learning environments of schools impact the opportunities for our students. And lastly, as I end the report tonight and ultimately my last meeting in my first year in service to the students, I want to share my gratitude to our district and my hope that we all keep working together for a better tomorrow. Like many of you, I spent the weekend in disbelief of the unheard acts of violence, sadness for the loss of life, and a deep concern for our state, our families, and our children. This morning, I presented a conference which was kicked off by Gary Lee. He's the Deputy Executive Director of, uh, the Minnesota School Board Association. And he talked about the negative narrative that continues about public education and the harm and the damage that's done in social media and in the public regarding this negativity. He introduced and shared a video of the One Voice Initiative, a statewide effort to encourage people to speak with one voice in support of public education and tell the story of public education. We know we must work to continue to improve our schools in order for every single one of our students to walk across that stage and to ultimately reach and discover their unique potential. And we also need to boldly share, like we did tonight, thank you again, the many, many amazing things that happen in our schools and in public schools across the state and the nation. We need young people to choose this profession and we need our communities to hear the many reasons to continue to support our students and the hard work that happens every day in our schools in support and service to our students. And our kids need us. I encourage us in the aftermath of some really hard days to continue to unite as a community and a school district and to ensure we are a place that treats our students and one another with dignity, kindness, and love. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, let's move on to Safety and Security Report. Fun to introduce.
Yes, thank you very much. As, uh, Maureen Mullin and Beau Powell and Joel are making their way, it looks like all of them to the podium. They're going to provide some information, uh, regards to projects in progress, uh, designed to improve safety and security in Ardell Schools. And I will go ahead and hand it over. Thanks for being here tonight.
We need to address Sall, Chair Evans Becker, members of the board, um, the public. We have put together presentations, so Beau Powell, Director of Security, Joel Marion, Director of Technology, Haley Heidelberg, Director of Risk Management, who could not be here with us tonight. This is a follow-up of the Safety and Security work that we touched on, on our October, it was 10th, October 21st, um, board presentation last fall. We are going to start out with a land acknowledgement. Uh, we acknowledge Robbinsdale Area Schools is located on the homelands of the Dakota and Ojibwe people. We recognize the painful history of genocide and forced assimilation of the indigenous inhabitants of this land. We honor and respect the many indigenous peoples who live on and hold sacred these lands, and we stand with members of these nations to fight injustice in all of its forms. We uphold the preservation of Dakota and Ojibwe languages, land-based education, and tribal sovereignty. The work of our team is grounded in the mission statement, which is to, the mission of Robbinsdale Area Schools is to inspire and educate all learners to develop their unique potential and positively contribute to their community. It's also grounded in the district priority work. It is under, um, strategic theme B2, which is to strengthen practices around student, staff, and school safety. We hope that during this outcome, uh, the board and the community will gain an understanding of, of some of the safety and security work that we've been engaged through throughout the winter and spring, that was going to continue into the summer and also into next school year. So you saw this, um, slide, this risk management model, um, last fall when we presented and we talked about the district's safety and security systems and practices. We're going to use this model again to illustrate the alignment with our current work. In stage one, um, we are going to be looking at the current work we're doing falls under physical security and emergency planning. In stage two, the work that we're doing, stage two is preparedness and the work we're doing under that, um, uh, stage falls under communication systems. And as you know, um, we are statutorily required, um, to engage in specific crisis management work and all of the safety and security work we're talking about tonight and in this presentation is statutorily required. So these are our active projects in, uh, that mitigation and prevention at stage one and a preparedness at stage two work. Surveillance cameras, card access control, visitor access, public address or P A systems, lockdown buttons, key controls, shelter, EGRS maps, emergency action guides. So we've developed and are implementing standard operating procedures, or SOPs, which we're going to refer to throughout this presentation that we're going to speak to tonight. We're going to, that, what that means is that we're going to clarify how these systems should work, um, or how they should be used, that we're auditing the current state of that equipment. We're making the necessary changes to align with our standard operating procedures and we're verifying that those changes have been implemented and are operating correctly. Then we can need to communicate with our staff about those changes and conduct any trainings for site staff on those SOPs. So some of these site projects are going to be paid for with our new capital projects levy and some with health and safety dollars. There are a lot of projects, uh, and with 21 buildings, it's a really big scope. We have concerns about the, um, current market, um, labor, labor availability, the implication that tariffs might have on the cost for our projects. And then unforeseen items like one we found out, um, late last week, which is that, uh, one of the suppliers for our card access project, um, was recently acquired and is shutting down for five weeks while they are, they're not taking any supply orders. So, um, unforeseen, unforeseen things happen and it's how you handle them that matters, right? So, um, we'll continue to move forward. We're pushing to get as much done over the summer as we can. Uh, we know it's going to go into the fall and, um, and that is what it will be, so.
Earlier was mentioned a little bit about, uh, surveillance cameras. So we are, uh, currently, um, talking about our, our security cameras, really looking at and digging into, um, the placement of our cameras, where our cameras are, are they working properly, uh, what are they capturing? Um, so trying to, to make sure that we are maximizing our coverage, um, cutting down on a number of cameras that we have, but also making sure that they are, they are working properly. Also, we're, um, our long-term goal is to ensure the reliability and of camera access with acquired storage capacity so that we could, uh, so when we talk about storage capacity, we talk about how long you can save recorded video. And we want to make sure we be able to maximize that, 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 uh, storage space. Also, we're, uh, doing walkthroughs, camera audits at all sites. I've, um, I was just at three sites today, looking at our cameras, looking at our, our coverage, uh, looking at where the, where the place, placement is. Because right now, if we go to some buildings, we could replace a camera there, but is it, is it covering the things that we need to cover? Is it maximizing our space and our, and maximizing the, what we're capturing? So those are the things that we're, we're doing. Also, we're, uh, identifying a variety of solutions such as camera repairs and replacements. So how do we repair our cameras and how do we replace them? Uh, because I think sometimes, uh, there's a misconception out there that when you put a camera up there, it lasts lifetime of the building, but it doesn't. You've got to remember, we're in Minnesota, so it gets hot, cold, 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 hot. We have, you know, and then sometimes the cameras don't, uh, they don't hold up to that. And also, you know, that we get, sometimes we get birds that run into them, we get bird strikes, we get, you know, balls that hit them. It's just how do, how do we replace those when those things, uh, those things go down? Next, we want to talk about card access. Right now, we're planning on navigating to move to encrypted cards. Encrypted cards are cards that can't be duplicated, can't be, um, it's, you know, you, you can't copy them. As you know, there's a lot of things out there where you can go on Amazon, you can, you can buy a card reader and copy any card that you want. These encrypted cards, you can't do that. So it's a, it's a additional safety measure for us so that we aren't having people copying cards and we got additional cards out there that, uh, are, um, that people shouldn't have or they're, they're haven't been, uh, issued by the district. Um, also, uh, the new cards, we, as most of you know, you all have cards. As you look at our little thumbprint, uh, pictures that you can't see unless I'm, um, right on top of you. So we are changing the looks of our cards where our picture is being bigger, we'll have, uh, different colored cards. And I think, um, yeah.
We have some shantel.
Yeah, we have. So you can see what they look like. You know, using the, the larger print
Simple, in draft format.
On the cards is, uh, is helps easily positively identify a card holder quickly, like I said earlier. With the encrypted cards, it also ensures a card cannot be duplicated like I talked about earlier. Also, it, it, we really focus on access permission levels, uh, card users, meaning which doors can cars work on, what access do, uh, staff members have, what, what access should they have? Also, we are really focusing on making sure that, um, our card readers are working when they, when they walk up to it and, and scan their badge. But sometimes people say they aren't working, uh, but that's because they don't have access to that space, so that's why they don't work, so. Our visitor access, access control. When you go to our buildings, this is what you see on the outside. This is how visitors gain access to the building. They push the button, um, possibly get ID and, um, they're, they're buzzed in. We are making sure that all, all those work. We're updating the ones that don't work. We're updating. We have some where you can, you, you can't see the picture, you can't see the person clearly because they're just, they're old, like a lot of things. Um, they, they need to be replaced as well. So we're just going through, making sure that those are, those are, uh, up to date and working and that we can positively ID, uh, who's coming in. We've also created, um, standard, uh, SOPs for all our sites, making sure that, that we're, that, uh, how we're using them and what we're using them for are the same every building, no matter which building you, which building you would go to.
So our public address systems, our P A systems, um, having them be consistent and reliable is just a really important component of our emergency preparedness and we really have some improvements we need to do in this area. Um, we have a variety of P A operating systems. Some are tied to our fire panels, some are not, uh, different, uh, brands and types. And so they require a variety of solutions, um, to order to make them, um, to implement the standard operating procedure, which we want to do with our, um, our P A systems. So at the minimum, that SOP, we want every, this is going to sound very simplistic, but every, um, building be able to do an all call, inside and out, maybe be able to, uh, do an outside-only call and do an inside-only call. Some of our systems have much greater capacity. Some of our systems don't have this capacity yet. So our goal for this summer, uh, for this, this phase of the project is to ensure that every site has those three standard operating, um, procedures in place and that the admin are able to use a standard desk phone to, um, activate the system as well as to use the handheld microphone in that digital voice command box, uh, which is what some sites are currently using. So, um, again, some of those P A systems have, um, capacity for much more complex functions and when we get to stage two, we will look at implementing those, but we really want to make sure we, um, identify the issues and get to that basic level for every site.
This is another one of our, uh, big projects that we're doing right now, working on our lockdown buttons, to make sure that our lockdown buttons, um, work at, at the sites. They operate, they operate, the functions work all the same in all the buildings, so they shouldn't be, they shouldn't be work at one building and not work at the other building. We do have some buildings that they, they, they just don't work right now and we're trying to figure out why they're not working. So we are, we're working on those. We're, uh, early with, we're also developing SOP, which includes things like standardizing the, uh, button locations. Uh, we have, uh, multiple button locations, so it's just not, uh, one location. So we have multiple locations, so we want to standardize those, so we make sure we have, um, those in the same locations in all our, all our buildings. So if, if you have staff that, that are traveling from building to building, uh, it still looks the same no matter what building you're in and those buttons are in the same locations. And making sure that the locations that we select are locations that people can get to quickly in an, in an emergency. And as we talk about key controls, this is a, this is a huge thing. I've, I've been doing a lot of touring of our, our sites and, um, we have, uh, a, a lot of old keys, like we have a lot of keys that are out there. So right now, we're, we're, um, coming up with ways to, to limit access, um, to shelter areas. Also, our goal is, of this project is that staff will be able to access most spaces in, in, um, shelter situations. So, uh, if I'm, uh, so like, for instance, so if I'm a, if I'm a, uh, teacher next door to Maureen, I should be able to get into that room if there's an emergency situation or if I'm across the, if I'm in a different area of the building, I should be able to get into a classroom in an emergency situation. So we don't want to have it where if I'm in the A wing and my classroom is in the A wing, but I end up in the B wing, I don't want a situation where I can't get myself or students into shelter because my key doesn't work there. So that's things that we're going through right now, making sure that all our teachers can get into any classroom space in their buildings, no matter where they are, just in case there's, there's an emergency or, or they need to take shelter. in case there's an emergency or they need to take shelter.
All right, so emergency shelter and EGRS map. So these are, there are fire routes, if there's a fire alarm in the building, these are the routes that the student staff used to get out of the building, the green blocks of areas are the shelter areas, so for storm or other types of shelter. These maps haven't been updated in a long time and we are auditing them. We have started that process verifying that the routes that are indicated are the correct routes, are there any changes to the buildings that aren't indicated, whether it's a new wall or a new office or a door that's no longer there, so updating these maps. And the other important part of this project is to make sure that they're put up in the rooms. So as custodial staff finished cleaning the rooms this summer, the last thing on their checklist is to verify that the emergency documents are posted in that room. This is one of those documents, the emergency shelter and EGRS map for that building. This is the other document that custodial staff are verifying that are posted. This is our standard response protocol, emergency action guide. Verifying that these two things are in place is really important to that emergency planning and preparation so that these things are at people's fingertips all the time. So winding up with that, so again, big scope, not a lot of detail right now, please feel free to ask questions as long as we have that time, oh, timekeeper. But let us know what questions you have and we'll be happy to try to answer them for
Hey, Director Holmes?
My first question is going to relate to the badges. At one point, we were talking about updating the student badges as well and including, you know, what the lockdowns or whatever the calls are in terms of direction, what they're supposed to be doing for consistency. And that was, there was talk about putting that on the staff badge too. Will that be indicated?
Is this, is that on the back? Lockdown that?
Yes.
Yep.
I'm sorry, and then just also the Sandy Hook Promise app, we talked about including that at one point too.
So these, the things that we're talking about here are physical projects as opposed to programmatic projects. So Sandy Hook app is a programmatic, just like doing a reunification exercise would be appropriate for me.
No, I'm fully aware of what Sandy Hook is. I'm saying we have an anonymous reporting app and we talked about putting that informational piece on the badge itself.
Okay.
And then, so is that card you just held up, is that going with the badges or is it an additional insert?
So this, so the badges, the project we're talking about now is specific to staff. So this is for staff or staff or substitutes, city workers, that sort of thing, that sort of thing. So not a student badge. We have talked about and are able to, if the security team decides to put this on the back, that is an option for us, our printers are able to do that. But I don't know about the Sandy Hook Promise.
And I'm just, it's work that we had done before, so I think Director Powell is up to speed on that in terms of staff had created that little what the calls mean and we're using it. So I guess, is there a reason we wouldn't put that on the back of their badge?
We have to decide between one or the other and the one that we use the most would be our, the standard response calls, with the one that she has, that's the one that we use the most frequent because our badge is limited to the amount of information we can add to
You have a follow-up other question?
Separate question, but I think Director Bowman had.
Director Bowman and then Director Holmes again.
Right. I wanted to thank you for this information. I think in the safety committee meeting that we've had on and off over the last couple of years, it appears as though you've touched most of the things that we had been on sort of a pick list for members on this board. And I also appreciate the added things that you have in here, like the key control piece of it. The other thing that is really important to me as a board member is you talking about standard operating procedures and the implementation of those standard operating procedures. I know that nobody wants to have an emergency in any building, but I also know that the ease in which people can respond and the level to which they've been trained to respond is critical to saving lives and keeping buildings safe. So as having been a member on that committee, I really appreciate the work that I'm seeing here tonight. I especially like the in an emergency take action piece of it because it takes the guesswork out of what do I do, what do I do, which is kind of my response to emergencies. So, and, you know, so my, mine is not so much a question, but more of a comment of this is great stuff and I really look forward to the next phases of the work that you're doing to enhance security in our district. So thank you.
Director Holmes?
Yes, and then my second question is in regards to the surveillance cameras and the visitor access systems. I know that work was being reviewed, I want to say 18 months ago in terms of tours and analysis of placement and all of that. Where was the hiccup? Why was that not moved on when the process had begun before?
Glad you mentioned that. So two things, one is that, one thing I wanted to mention is that the work that we're doing is, did not start, you know, nine months ago or last summer. It's built on years of work that people have done, audits and walkthroughs. And I know there was a very in-depth security audit done a few years ago and a lot of work came out of that. And I don't know the answer to why that hiccup is there, but I do know that we are continuing the work that has been done, we're building on it and it's really, we did over this winter and this spring, a lot of untangling of the why can't we make this work? And it was a lot of untangling, you know, but it's very exciting to be in the place where we are like, we are starting projects, we are doing stuff, we are going to change that. And I think that we as a team really have a goal of, we want our staff and student experience to be different in September than it was, you know, at the end of the year. And these are the projects that we really feel will help. We're, you know, I wish we could get them all done, we're not going to get them all done, but we are going to get into all of them.
I guess just a follow-up point to my colleagues is the safety and security ad hoc was aware of these and was presenting those to you for quite some time. So I think the board needs to really take a look at our internal process and how we ensure that things are done when we're being told that they're going to be done. So maybe a potential work session there is a suggestion from myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Bassett?
Yeah, just very quickly, I know that, thank you for the presentation and for the work. So when we talk about safety and security, there are, I'm assuming, and I've been told that there are aspects of safety and security that are maybe just very proprietary and we must, we need to have and we do have closed sessions to discuss those things. So I wondered, are there some things that fall out in that scope from this work? Or are you getting to any of those kinds of things? Is that going to be included, any of that stuff? Because we'd have an appropriate meeting, level meeting to discuss it.
Absolutely, yeah, I understand. So I think, so as the safety and security team, so the three of us and also with Haley Heidelberg have set some of those standard operating procedures in place, review, building on the work that was done by the teams in the past about best practice. And so some of that is not going to be publicly shared, you know, this is how the district does it when this happens, right?
Well, that's right.
But as far as how that affects, can we move forward without, it's really, there's a lot of industry standard around it. So the things that are, that are specific to the district, like cards that are encrypted, we'll own that encryption, the.
Well, that wasn't quite.
Am I not understanding your question?
I'm just saying, if there are some things that fall within the scope of the work you're doing now or future, that really require a closed session for you to inform the board about those things. And I'm not, I'm not seeing that these things are that or you wouldn't be sharing it here publicly, so.
I don't think these things are that, but I think that's a good question for us as a team to consider as we, as we meet and as we do our work. But thank you, we will consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this and thank you for your presentation. That's Director Hoheisel.
Oh, now I'm on, thank you. One thing that I'd like to just acknowledge is as they, as the team, as we work through the work, there is the potential to have typically, we like to be on the cadence of two meetings for the school board to approve. You see it, we present it and then the next meeting, it gets approved. Some of this work might not fall into that timeline, just given all of the things presented. Heads up, we'll let you know when we know, I just don't want to be caught, like we try to keep to that cadence, there's just sometimes we can't, just FYI.
Thank you. All righty.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on down the agenda to operations. Letter A on operations is the long-term facility maintenance plan. This is presented in the past, take it away.
Thank you. Greetings, Chair Evans-Becker, the school board members, Superintendent Stallow. I am, and I'm happy to get up to the podium too, but because I do not have an official presentation, I was going to sit here. What is in front of you is a handful of documents as it relates to the long-term, our long-term facility maintenance plan. We had talked about it in different capacities at the school board meeting on Tuesday, June 3rd. One was kind of what the board conceivably was comfortable with on how to move forward as far as the debt and our levy and maintaining it. And then as we moved into work session, we looked at honestly, the 10-year plan, talked about opportunities there and what we can do. The reality is, is we do have, we had issued debt, 19 million and some in November, December of '24. All of that is still intact. So you had seen we're going to be moving forward with projects. Not all of those projects will be the pay-as-you-go piece, which is the annual levy. Some of those projects will be using, will be drawing down on the bonds that we issued. So to this year's submission, again, that starts our levy cycle and levy information system is composed of five things that are in board book. The first is the resolution authorizing long-term facility maintenance. The second is the 10-year expenditure plan. The third is the revenue, revenue dollar amount, which again, if you look through the entire document, there's a line that indicates 4.3 million and change. That includes the intermediate district as well, that number is in there, you have to include that, which you had approved in May. And then the statement of insurances, which the superintendent says yes to all of this. And so I am asking the board to approve our long-term facility maintenance plan and all of the documents that are attached based on the work session discussion, June 3rd. I am available for questions.
Okay, perhaps we could get a motion first? Director Hellenbrand?
I move to accept the long-term facilities maintenance plan as proposed.
And all documents that are.
And all documents attached.
And waive the reading.
And I'll waive the reading, yes.
Thank you. Okay, Hellenbrand and seconded by Director Bowman. Does anybody have any questions that haven't been answered?
I have one.
Director Bassett?
So the facility study that we just saw recently, I think, and I remember the dollar amount, I remember the name of it, but was that paid for by capital? Was that able to come out of this money?
So currently, right now, the question that came up at work session was how much for people to walk through our buildings and do the complete list of the facility assessment? That dollar amount was approximately $385,000. We have not paid that dollar amount. Currently, that is considered phase one of what we're doing with the Vision Team and with Nexus. Should we move to, and there was, I believe, a follow-up email that was sent to this question to the school board, should we move to phase two, which is in any capacity implementing any sort of facilities plan, that will then, that cost will then be embedded within, you know, whatever we do. So right now, we haven't paid anything out of pocket, but if we move to phase two, that will be a component of it.
And so the reason I asked the question is because it is, we're able to pay it through long-term facilities funding was really the heart of my question. And so at the point that we get to that, it can be paid for out of those dollars. That was really my question.
I do not believe we can pay, use long-term facility maintenance dollars for an assessment. And the reason why I say that is because long-term facility maintenance dollars are like for like and an assessment or the work that the service that goes into that is not like for like now.
Yeah, well.
Go ahead.
Director, you know, actually, I know that, but the reason I really was trying to get to is that have we paid for it and how are we going to pay for it? That was really the question. So I might have asked it, you know, in a circular way because I was thinking about this. But, and that can be later, I think I understand you, we're not quite there yet. And so I would say then, I think that a work session or some discussion about it, not to just get it, I mean, and you'd usually do that. So I'm just kind of affirming that that, there's a need for us to clearly understand that and how are we going to pay for it and the cadence of that.
Thank you, Director Holmes.
I guess for clarification on what Director Basket was just asking, so if the approval of this and all the supporting documents, does that implement phase two?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I see no more hands raised with questions and so we are going to vote and this is a roll call vote and what we are voting on is the implement, is to approve the long-term facilities maintenance plan and the accompanying documents. We'll take the roll call, please.
Of course, with pleasure. Director Bassett?
Yes.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans-Becker?
Yes.
Director Hellenbrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
No.
Director Long?
No.
Director Wooton?
Yes.
Wooto, excuse me, yes.
So we have five yes, two no?
Five to two.
The long-term facilities maintenance plan and all documents have been approved. Okay. Letter B, an action item, approving the preliminary budget and resolution for the FY '26. Director Hoheisel?
Thank you. Three documents to support, there was again, a presentation, there's been multiple presentations actually, but kind of the final presentation for all of our funds for the preliminary budget was presented again at the beginning of June, at the June 3rd meeting. The information that is in front of you tonight is the '25-'26 preliminary budget book. This was presented in draft form to the school board on June 3rd. It was not made available to the public at that time because it was in draft form and it was an incomplete document. There were some slight modifications to the pages within that book. There was an adding to one of the pages of the base model and components of what was included in the base model. There are also some notes as it, when you go to the back of the book, when talking about revenue and expenditures and why there might be some changes as you look at '23-'24 actual, '24-'25 revised and then the preliminary. If the numbers seem off, it was like, yeah, that might need to be called out as a question and so that is for reference. The next document was the executive cabinet summary as requested. Hopefully, we hit the mark as far as the overview, the staffing models, the base model, the class size ratios and different components that I went to the budgeting process. This was sent to the board via email earlier today. I do believe it is posted or at least available at this time, but that was a synopsis, again, I believe as requested, hopefully we hit the mark to say the information has been staggered throughout essentially late winter and spring. And here's a nice summary of what has happened. The final document is the document that I would be looking for action on, which is the resolution adopting the '25-'26 preliminary budget. This does, this is a format that the board is used to and it does present revenue and expenditure budget in its totality by fund. At this time, I will turn it over to the board for questions.
Thank you. We have been talking about this for quite a while and people have had the opportunity to submit questions. Does anyone have any unanswered questions? Director Bassett, you have one?
Well, I do and I guess I have a comment. There may be a question, I'll try to get to it. And that is, you know, I asked for a work session to talk about the budget further specifically, I think, a couple, on the 19th, I believe it was, the 19th of May. And I asked for a reason and I was given an understanding at that time from the superintendent that we were going to, rather than have a work session, we were going to talk about it, you know, we were going to give us an update. I think right around that same time, I asked for the service model. So let me just pause right here and say thank you so much. When you say, did I hit the mark? You have, because for me, the service delivery we give to the community, to the children is really what the budget's about. And then how do we manage our staff and, you know, are we doing what we're supposed to be doing? So when I look at this, it helps me understand and. So when I look at this, it helps me understand and get some context for some of the things that are going to be changed in that budget. We've talked in detail about the transportation. There are a couple of things we've talked in detail about, and this really does a good job, but, but what's been a moving target a bit in my mind has been from the conversations, what programs that we were going to actually retain and how they might be changed. And so this helps me see that, and, and I do appreciate it and the work that you put into it. Haven't said that.
Done?
Well, until I vote.
Oh, good. Well, we need a resolution in order to do that. A motion? Thank you, a motion for the resolution. Thank you. Director Bowman?
I make a resolution to-
I move?
I move to make a resolution to approve the FY26 budget.
Okay, let's reword that to, I'd like to approve, let's see. Move the resolution to approve the budget?
Yeah.
Okay. And waive the reading.
Okay. Yeah, and avoid the reading of all the details.
So we have a motion to approve the resolution adopting the 2025, 26 budget. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Director Wuto. Any further? Director Holmes?
I'm going to go ahead and take a couple of minutes to clarify my vote. I will be voting no on this budget. This budget for me does not prioritize the needs of students, nor does it prioritize staff voice and recommendations. Perhaps even more concerning to me is this budget lacks the necessary transparency needed for directors to make informed decisions. Clear examples of this are the communications back and forth around the health model changes and the family literacy program that we're all aware of. In addition, I will not support market rate salary increases for cabinet while we can't provide basics within our schools, which we're seeing student support's drastically reduced and classroom sizes are increasing as a result of staff reductions. Not changing the ratios, but you're going to see those classes go up. The data and feedback the board has received in forms of emails, listening hours, stakeholder surveys, historical data around staff additions and declining student enrollment, as well as state-provided test scores and proficiency rankings, has shown a change in budgetary focus is needed and it's needed now. Budgetary surveys last year recorded approximately 1,900 responses from families, community members, staff, and students. Of those responses, 561 were from staff. When asked which curriculum-related areas were most important for the district to prioritize when determining the use of funds for this year, 79% of those staff ranked literacy and reading achievement as their top priority. In agreement were the families and community respondents, 70% of those respondents also ranked literacy and reading achievement as their top priority. The survey inquired next about the most important items to continue funding, with 80% of responding staff ranking additional staff for classroom support as their first priority. 76% of responding families and community members ranked additional classroom support as their first priority. You see a lot of patterns here. Beyond that survey, during a January 6, 2025 meeting, the board was also shown historical data around staff additions by category, which showed the decreasing student enrollment that's been occurring for a decade. We also showed that the teachers have decreased from 432 to 386, a decrease in AFSMI and nutritious services, a decrease in custodial services from 91 to 87, minimal EA increases from 408 to 418, but there were increases in program assistance of 107 to 134, an increase in directors from 41 to 51, and an increase of principals of 25 to 38. Opening schools does not match up with that data. The board also received a presentation in February, which provided significant information around historical decreasing student enrollment, stating that our district capture rate declined from 70 to 62.5%. All of this is valuable data that should have been utilized for decision-making. An opportunity was missed this year after the $21 million error was identified. An opportunity to focus on listening, collaboration, and trust-building should have taken place. Good governance is founded on listening and collaboration, collaborating with the entire board, not just aiming for the majority. That's what the community expects. I'll close by recognizing that cuts within a school district budget will always be painful, and we're seeing it across this country. 281's case, we've needed it for a long time. However, I remain deeply troubled by how the budgetary decisions have been determined and communicated out to the public. I do not think the process should add to that pain, and this appears to be the case in quite a few instances. I challenge this board to do better. Cannot support this budget.
Director Long?
I also will be voting no. I've asked questions several times and still have not received my answers to those questions. I've asked them during meetings, and then I've also asked those same questions in an email and still have not gotten my response to those. I am disappointed that we were all not included within the decision-making in this, since that is the board's duty. And I'm hoping in the future, we can move on and collaborate when we're creating these budgets, especially when that's supposed to be the board's oversight to figure out the finances of the district.
Director Bowman?
I'll be supporting the budget that was presented to us tonight for a variety of reasons. I do believe that the new superintendent came in to a situation where we had a board that was, I mean, we had a budget that was fluid. It was all over the place. I was really surprised when I saw the budget as it was presented by Ms. Hoheisel, that as board members, we had been told that we had, over these years, over the many years I've been following what's been going on in the board, along with my years of serving on the board, that the most recent figures were that we had a $203 million budget, and then it was sort of a $210 million budget, and then it was sort of a $220 million budget. And then when we get the budget book and we really have a decent budget that's put together in the real world by real experts, we actually have a $298 million budget. So this is a budget that every single one of us in the district has pinched our nose, and this is painful. The cutting of family literacy at the Crystal Learning Center is something that I am well aware about, but I also know that we have other resources in this district that we're going to be able to place and help those families. And from my understanding, they've already been placed and helped. What was critical to me in this budget is to get a budget that was actually accurate and that actually showed the entire, the entire budget, monetary budget for this school district, and we have finally seen that. I want, I want to say that taking everything into consideration, we've had the assumptions delivered to us, we've had all the information. I, I don't know, it's confusing to me to be sitting at this board table and being told that I haven't received all the information, yet when I read through the stack of material, some of that first information came to us in presentations by Dr. Stallow last July at our first board retreat. So none of this was a surprise to me. I think that it's, for as painful that it is, it was about time in this district that we had leadership that stood up and created a budget based in the real world that was going to be sustainable over time. We are going to be in a world of hurts, not only this year, but next year and probably the following year. But in rightsizing any budget, you have to go through the pain to get it to the point where kids are going to be finally served, and we, we would actually then have an opportunity to be a destination district. We haven't dreamed big enough. The other thing that was impressive to me in this budget was that the projected program reserve fund, which at this year, at this point, is in the negative by 3.4 million, our reserve fund, program reserve fund right now sits at 3.4 million in the negative. By the financial work that's being done in this budget and by the leadership in this district, the projection for next year, June of 2026, reserve will be in the positive to the tune of 13.85 million. Those are changes that as not only a school board member, but as a resident, a long-term resident of this district, I've been waiting to see that finance, that, that reserve fund be respected and be built into the work that we're doing instead of just thinking that, oh, it'll go away, or, oh, it'll manage itself, or, oh, we'll come back to that at some point. So I strongly support this budget. I am grateful for the work that was being done. I am very sorry to all of those people who have negatively been impacted by budget constraints of ours. I've also been appreciative of those people who were negatively impacted by the budget, who spoke with me and said, I know the work has to be done. So to me, this was comprehensive in a way that we have not seen in this district in well over 30 years, in, in my estimation. So I thank the administration for putting it together, and I will be supporting the budget this evening.
Thank you. I'd like to commend CFO Hoheisel and Superintendent Stallow on the work that you did on this budget. We've known since last fall that there would be deep and painful cuts. We've been getting previews of this budget since January, and budget cuts are awful. The problem with the school budget is 80% of it is people. If it was a business, it would be 15 to 30% being people. And so when our cuts are made, talented people, wonderful talented people and beloved programs end up getting cut, and no one wants to cut or be cut. It's painful, but we're not a business, and that's where the money is going. I'm going to be voting in favor of this budget, and I also know a few things. A budget is the best guess we have at this time, and things can change. And number two, it's going to be even more difficult next year. So thank you for the work that you did on this. I know it's not what either of you signed up for when you started in the Robinsdale Schools, but you have taken it on and really done a great job working on it. Anybody else have a comment? Director Bassett?
My vote is not going to be a reflection of, I, I just want to say, I really appreciate your presentation, Director Hoheisel, and the work that you're doing, the fact that you are the one who brought to our attention that there was that $21 million deficit. And so, you know, you came to work here, you're doing your job, you know? And so I, I support that. I am concerned about some of the expenditures for new, new positions. I, this is not a surprise to the superintendent. I sent her a note. You know, I feel like that with the cuts we've made in staffing, I'm, I would like a wait-and-see kind of posture to see how things go. There are some deep cuts in this budget, and I just feel like it would be better, we would be better served as a district to do that. I'm, it's not, it's not about second-guessing the superintendent. I'm just going to vote my conscience, and so I'll be abstaining. I'm not a showstopper, but at the same time, the things that I have shared with you, superintendent, that I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about. And the family literacy program is one of those things. I, I think in terms of visioning, this board was not involved in that visioning. And visioning, visioning is a joint effort. So I don't want to go further with that because I appreciate the work that has been done. My comments don't denigrate the work at all. It represents my values. So that's, that's all I need to do is just make sure I'm doing that, and with, with honor.
Thank you, Director Bassett. Director Wuto?
Yeah, I also just want to echo my thanks to the CFO and superintendent. This is my first budget, being on the school board, so I can only speak from the experience that I just had. It has been a lot of good information that was given for me to be able to make a useful decision to say I will be voting yes. I think the public does need to know that what just happened in these three months that I've been on the board, if that was what happened the last year or the year before, some of the things that are happening this year wouldn't be as deep as they are. So yes, it is painful, but I think we are heading in the right direction. So thank you.
Thank you. Director Hellenbrand, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just want to quickly say that I really do, again, appreciate the work. I think that we have been informed along the way. I also think that, while I may or may not have made some of the same decisions, these are, are programmatic decisions that in, need to be left to the people who are running the programs, who know all the details and the ins and outs, and therefore I do support this budget. I'm 100% going to say, we all have things that we, we love and cherish in this district, and it's really hard when they're cut or they're on the chopping block, and nobody wants to be doing that. We all want the district to grow, to thrive, and cuts are, are a challenging piece, but hopefully by doing these cuts, we're setting ourselves up for a better and brighter future financially.
Thank you. Right, I have heard from all the board directors, and we are going to vote. So this is a roll call vote, so when you are ready, Director Bowman?
Director Bassett?
I'm going abstain.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans-Becker?
I vote yes.
Director Hellenbrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
No.
Director Long?
No.
Director Wuto?
Yes.
There are four yeses, two nos, and one abstention, yet that is considered a no, correct?
No, abstention doesn't count.
Oh, it is a yes, okay. So then there are five yeses, two nos.
Either way, we have a budget.
Yep, we have a budget approved. Congratulations.
Director Bassett?
Well, Chair, it should be recorded as it was stated.
As an abstention.
As stated.
It is recorded as an abstention. Yep, I'm just reassuring you.
Okay, I know, but I'm just-
Thank you.
Skip into the chair.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's see what's up next. All righty. An action item, a resolution designating brokers for investment of district funds for 2025.
This is an annual list that is approved, and I believe we will get on the cycle of having this every January when the board takes hold, but right now, we are mid-cycle. So these are where the, the school board gives us permission to have these organizations invest our money for us. So when you see things for interest earnings, these are the areas that we can go to to generate the interest earnings. I do not believe the list is any different than what the board has approved in the past.
Thank you. This is routine in nature. Director Holmes, do you have a question or a motion?
I have a question, but I can wait for the motion.
I'm moving.
Okay, it's been moved by Director Bassett, seconded by Director Bowman. Director Holmes, your question?
Can you just elaborate on what you just said? It'll come in January when the board takes hold.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That, yes, that was Kristen speak and certainly not professional CFO speak. I believe, and I'm going to look to Molly on this, I believe that we are going to move to a cycle where when the school board, when, as the school board turns over or doesn't, as you do your organizational meeting, part of the organizational meeting will be the list of things that we're now teed up to go through on the agenda. The, the investments, the, the depository, the legal, those sorts of things will be part of the organizational meeting, but because it is on a cycle right now of a, let's say a July 1 to a June 30th, we'll keep this for six months. It will be in front of you again to do annually.
That was my question, because we spoke about it last year, aligning with that, and so now it's just six months, and then we're going to, so we'll re-vote in January?
Correct.
On the same, okay, thank you.
Correct.
Good clarification, thank you. Seeing no more hands, this is a roll call vote. So we're voting on the resolution, we did waive the reading on that, right? Thank you. The resolution designating brokers for investment of district funds. Director Bowman?
Great, thank you. Director Bassett?
I vote yes.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans-Becker?
Yes.
Director Hellenbrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
Yes.
Director Long?
Yes.
Director Wuto?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Okay, we have motion, motion carries. We have investors, brokers for investment. Moving right along, now we need to have an action item, the resolution for designating depositories for the district funds for 2025, 26. Director Ho, CFO Hoheisel, same thing?
Thank you. The depositories is where that our money is placed, it's our banks. Again, this is routine in nature, and I do not believe anything on this list is new to the board of what has been approved in the past.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move approval and waive the reading.
Thank you. Second by Director Bowman. We have a resolution designating the depositories for school district funds. I don't see any hands up, so let's take a vote.
Great. Director Bassett?
Yes.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans-Becker?
I vote yes.
Director Hellenbrand?
Director Hellenbrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
Yes.
Director Long?
Yes.
Director Wuto?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you. Next up, a resolution authorizing payment of specific statements in advance for the 2025-26.
Thank you. Again, another routine resolution that we would be looking at in annual approval. This is for essentially our bills that get paid, whether it be electronic form or what have you, that are automatic payments and not waiting for board approval. So utility bills is a direct wire. The board is aware of it, they approve it, but in all odyssey, that has left our bank account or our coffers before typically the timing of a board meeting. No different than our insurance payments and various things. This list is encompassing of what is essentially pre-approved. Irregardless of the timing of the payment, the remainder of all of our bills come before the board for approval prior to payment.
Thank you. Okay. Got a lot of motion... We haven't had a motion on this yet. Could I have a motion on this? Director Bowman?
I'll move approval and waive the reading.
Okay, do I have a second? Seconded by Hellenbrand. So we have a motion on the resolution authorizing payment of specific statements in advance for 2526. Director Holmes?
Any way to speak about the regulations or approval process around travel expenses? And then you see, so it's number three, and then number nine for special program speaker fees, consulting fees, and contracted personal service fees? Or any... I know it's going to vary by department. It's just hot items that have come up before in terms of our spending and how they come through in the...
Yes, I will try to address that. The first is number three, the registration and travel expenses. There are times during, let's say, professional development where things are put on in a P-card, which is the district credit card. In theory, you've already then made commitment to pay because you've paid it via credit card to book a hotel room or book a flight if there was out of straight travel or whatever that might look like. Again, it's not all registration and travel expenses, but there are times where that is booked in advance of something happening in that method of payment. Same, when looking at number nine, the special program speaker fees, consulting fees, or contracted personnel fees, if it is a... gosh, I'm going with a timeliness issue or a down payment. If you have a speaker coming in for $3,000 and they require a $500 fee to hold the date, same situation, you're going to advance that $500 fee prior to the work being done. That doesn't necessarily match in rhythm to the school board meetings and the timing of that. So those would be examples. Again, it wouldn't... I would not... I would hope that that practice is more of the exception than the rule, but there are exceptions.
Follow-up? Follow-up? So are there... I know you've been giving us the running list of P-cards. Do you have that number? And then also, are there limits on those purchases at all?
There are limits on P-cards depending on the user that has them. Everybody has a... I shouldn't say everybody has a different rate, but there's different thresholds depending on your job title or description within the organization. I couldn't tell you what exactly they are right now per level, but yes, we do limit... Every P-card has a threshold of what they can put on it.
If allowed, I would just love to know that kind of range. Like, are we talking a $1,000 range, you know, maximum? Or are we... Do we have one that is unlimited? Just...
Happy to respond. I'm not prepared to respond to that right now.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other hands up, so let's vote on the resolution authorizing the payment of specific statements in advance for 2025. By six.
Great, thank you. Director Bassett?
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans Becker?
Yes.
Director Hellenbrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
Yes.
Director Long?
Yes.
Director Wuto?
Yes.
Seven zero.
We are unanimous. We have authorized the payments in advance. All right. Moving on to action item number seven, I see Director O'Hearn, Executive Director O'Hearn approaching.
Good evening, Chair Evans Becker, Directors, Superintendent Stallow. The memo... The purpose of the memo is to update the board on a disciplinary grievance submitted by a custodian. And pursuant to the custodian collective bargaining agreement, the custodian can have a hearing presented in front of the school board, if the board so chooses. As in the earlier matter in February of 2025, we again recommend that the board not become involved in the custodial grievance. However, it is the board's decision. So I am here tonight to ask what the decision is and have you determine that because tomorrow is the 15th day, and you have to decide by tomorrow so that we can be in compliance with the custodial contract.
And the recommendation is that in the event the board receives a Level III custodial grievance, that the board foregoes holding a hearing and refers the matter onto arbitration.
Correct.
Do I have a motion to that effect? Director Bowman?
So moved. I'll make a motion.
It's been moved. Is there a second? Director Wuto? Director Bassett?
We're talking about this specific instance.
Correct.
Yeah, this is not a policy we're into perpetuity.
Correct.
And I ask that question because I went to a training... I went to a training that with the labor and elected officials just recently, and so I think even this first comment that's on here about involving the board in a grievance procedure is outside of the purview of the board's duties. Well, only if the board decides that it is. I kind of take exception to having a statement like that in this because it's not accurate. You're shaking your head yes, or you're shaking your head what? I mean, I happen to be looking at...
My recommendation...
Your recommendation is different than a statement that's saying, you know, it's a declarative statement about involving the board in grievances outside of the purview of the board duties. The board determines what its duties are. And by practice and custom, boards can choose even to operate under policy governance. That's a decision, you know? And I think it's important to remember that that's a decision, because when you... When we don't remember, and I'm including myself, when we don't remember that, we can get very comfortable and make statements that, to a novice, they wouldn't understand the difference of it. And that's not interesting. Boards can be involved. And I think that that's important to note because, I mean, I heard what... I was at this presentation, and they had lawyers there, and they were talking about what the law is and all that. I already knew that, but I'm just saying, we have to be careful not to make declarative statements that are not ac... You know, they may, you know, they're not accurate. They are misleading. And it's another thing for me to get a recommendation from the administration that says, "I recommend that we don't do this, and here are the reasons why." I respect that, I always have. But I just don't want to have people telling me what the board's responsibilities and duties are, because the board gets to determine that within the scope of the law.
Okay.
Oh, please don't. Please, please don't.
It is... It depends on the language.
Okay. I agree.
We've had this discussion, and you can finish it.
Okay.
Hey, I don't think that this is...
Thank you. Director Bassett?
I am aware that contract language prevails. That is not the conversation. That is not what I said, and what I said stands. And I really would prefer not to have, you know, an interjection into the board's conversation for when I express an opinion. I just want to... I want to state that, because this is not a court of law. What I said was accurate. We didn't talk about the contract language. That was not a part of my comment. The link... The contract language does prevail, but the board's decision about whether they will or will not be involved in bargaining is the board's decision. Okay, well, I'm just saying, I just want to make it plain. I don't need a back and forth about it, quite frankly, unless you're going to go get elected and sit up here.
Okay. To be clear... Oh, yes?
I would also just like to request from the board that if there are specific questions to administrators, I think that that is absolutely appropriate. If there are comments or concerns that aren't related to the question at hand, that I'd ask for that not to be shared at a different time.
Well, Superintendent?
Director Bassett?
Superintendent, I'm not sure if that was directed at me. I was speaking to what I saw here in this document, and I didn't... was not denigrating anybody. I was just really saying that that's not accurate, and we have a... I just went to a training, and so I'm coming and sharing, this is what I just heard, and it builds on what I already knew.
Thank you. Director Holmes?
Yeah, I'm getting concerned with the volume that are coming in and then not being updated on where we stand on the previous ones. And I had sent an email asking for an update and said, "If I missed the update, please let me know." I have not seen that, and then to have a listening hour speaker come and talk about how many grievances are out there, I'm getting concerned with the pattern, and so I would like to have... I guess I would have liked more information and communication about where it might have been automatic that they were referred, but now this is producing a pattern for me, and so it requires a conversation for me.
Can I clarify that there are four?
I would love you to clarify, and maybe that's a conversation, you know, to your point, if we need to talk offline, because that's not the information that was given at listening hour, and I know we're not responding at the table, but that's a huge discrepancy. So I think when that's happening and these continue to come in, I just... It would require a conversation with the board to provide some reassurance, not just reiterating the letter that we have seen before. That's what I would have appreciated. And, you know, what are the updates from the other ones when we've referred them out in terms of what was the ultimate action that was produced? And what is that cost? Because in here, it's saying it's cost-effective. I really would like to know some of those things. So obviously, these... This is why I'm saying I... To put this on action, and I had asked Chair, you know, because of the timing. We were all aware of the timing based on the head of SEIU and... Or I don't know his role, shouldn't say that. A representative from SEIU telling us we were up against a deadline. That information shouldn't be coming that route, in my opinion.
Thank you. Long?
Yeah, last time that we got this letter, back in February, I voiced that I did not like the way it was worded, that it was worded in a way that it was like telling us what we needed to do as a board versus recommending what we should do as a board. And it hasn't been cleaned up since then. It still has those words in there, two bites of an apple, so that, you know, our opponents will know what's going on. I am really concerned that... What is going on with them? I have asked that before in emails. I have met with our Chair, and I've asked for updates on what is going on with the SEIU. I guess at this point, I would like to hear from them then. What is going on? Because if I'm asking the Chair, sending emails, asking about it, and not getting any response here, then who's going to give me the answers that I need so I can make informed decisions? Because I'm clearly not getting it through the channels that I've been working here.
I see no more hands. I believe we have the motion on the floor made by Director Bowman and seconded by Director Wuto to send this on to arbitration. And it's a voice vote. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
The motion carries. So we're sending it on.
Chair?
Director Bassett?
You know, before we... Since we're on this subject, I'll just mention this now. I really would like for us to have a conversation about the board's role in labor negotiations. We may do nothing, we may do anything different, we may stay the same, I don't know. I think it warrants a conversation, because I think it just does.
Thank you.
You know, and we can kind of figure out what needs to happen next. And I think that we conducted ourselves, for the most part, tonight, everyone with respect. And I don't think... I want to... I'm not rolling my eyes at anybody, and I don't want anybody looking disgusted at me, and I'm not saying anybody in the board did that, but I don't appreciate that, because I don't deserve it at all.
Thank you. Ready to move on to letter G, the resolution accepting the May 2025 donations? Now I get a motion to accept those donations?
So moved.
Direct... Moved by Director Hellenbrand?
I'll second.
Seconded by Director Holmes. This is a roll call vote, because it involves money, and nobody's going to have questions, but I see, so let's do it.
Sounds good. Director Bassett?
Yes.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans Becker?
I vote yes.
Director Hellenbrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
Yes.
Director Long?
Yes.
Director Wuto?
Yes.
Seven zero.
It's unanimous. Thank you for everyone who made those donations. All right, letter H, action 2025-26 strategic priority work. Either way, Superintendent?
As part of our district's system of continuous improvement over the course of the past year, board members, you have received nine presentations from each of the teams of the former priority work, which is part of your role in the operation of oversight that work, and we built that new system this year. So it was the first time that leaders went through the system, so we were kind of implementing as we were writing and defining it. I have spoken to this the last two study sessions. You heard recommendations on some of those presentations. Some of the presentations were earlier in the year, so they may not have been at that place. But we did as a team, a large leadership team, as all those recommendations came forward, we prioritized, and ultimately, in front of you is the recommendation for the priority work for 2025-26, and I will seek board action and approval, please.
We have a motion to approve the strategic plan work. That's planned for 2526. Director Bowman?
I will move approval on the strategic plan priority work.
I'll second.
Moved by Bowman, seconded by Director Hellenbrand. I see no hands up. I will take a vote. All in favor of approving the strategic priority work for 2526, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
The motion carries. We have approved the strategic priority work, and thank you for your work on that.
Thank... I want to thank my team, a very large team, that also had teams that worked on this and continuing to create a culture of continuous improvement and shared leadership. So I want to thank the team champions and all members of the teams. You saw many of them present over the course of the year.
Thank you. Great. We have a second read on Policy 104, which means we are voting tonight. Is there a member of the policy committee who wants to talk to us about that? Hide over it, just let me know who's...
I will address... We sent these forward because we saw... Well, this is the second time we're seeing them, so they should be familiar with these particular policies, and there was nothing of major sort of changes within all of these changes that came about. Came about as a result of legislative action or recommendation from MSBA. There were no surprises in the updates to these policies.
Sorry, if I may add a clarification. So the one that is up for second read, because it's only one, was asked to be pulled out last time, and the proposed change of adding, you know, that the board may also initiate review of the mission statement and strategic plan. Outside of that five-year cycle, we did make that change to the wording. So that's the only change we added, the requested wording. And then the others are for first read.
Yeah.
So we're only voting on one policy tonight, and that is the Policy 104. And I haven't written down that we have a motion on that one yet. Do we?
Second read should be a motion.
Right, and so I'd like to have one.
The approval of the policy as it's been written.
Moved by Hellenbrand, seconded by Director Basset. And it's a voice vote. I see no hands with questions. So all in favor of approving Policy 104, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Policy 104 is approved. And now we have the first reads, if anybody wants to speak to those. The first reads are 701, 702, 706, and 533. You can speak to them, go ahead.
Oh, all the 700 ones are ones that are financial in nature and were also reviewed and edited by the Financial Advisory Committee before coming to the policy committee. And so now we're bringing them forth to you. And then Wellness had to do changes in law and some verbiage related around that, as you can see in the crossouts.
Thank you. Director Holmes, did you have something that you wanted to say about any of those?
I just had a question.
Okay.
Unable to turn the last policy meeting. Policy 533. So there's a point F that just needs to be cleaned up, because it's not reading correctly with the strike there. And it's 533 to F.
For first read.
Nutrition needs of students and will perhaps, and will try to accommodate. It just got messy with the strikeout. And then as far as adequate time, I'd like to put a number on that. And I looked at CDC, and it revolves around at least 20 minutes of seated time, because I know we've had some challenges before with how many lunch lines we have and the lines. I just really want to ensure that it's seated time. So I'd like the board to consider using that, at least 20 minutes of seated time to eat lunch. And then I have a question on why it was stricken, it's just minor, with students and change to children. And the second page, in a couple of areas.
So former principal, I would say 20 minutes seated time, and it makes for trouble.
I understand it makes for trouble, but it's based on guidance by the CDC and our expectations of our kids, and it helps them learn better. We've had people come and speak to that, that their children are rushed, so they're not necessarily eating. I don't think it's awful to put 20 minutes in for lunchtime.
There could and likely would be financial implications to putting a 20-minute time limit, just so you are aware, as you are looking at your policies, that there is supervision, there is teacher contract language, there is various things that come into play. I just don't want that to be lost.
Thank you. Was your finger back up? Well, you can go that way first.
Oh, I was just going to say that to the children piece, you know, in the summer food program, people don't necessarily have to be students. They just have to be 0 to 18 years old to access the food program at certain site, you know, if the site's available. And so, or they could be attending summer school but not be a student here. And I think that's why children encompass all participants, whether or not they're enrolled students in Robbinsdale.
Thank you. All right, any other questions on the first read? Comments?
Yeah, I'm going to stick with my 20 minutes. I'd like, love to kick that back to policy and get some quantifications around contract concerns. Again, it's supported by the CDC. And I know y'all, if we're going to feed our kids, let's give them a chance to eat and process. And it's doing what's right for the students here. You need to eat, you need to eat.
Director Bowman?
I would recommend to just kick it back to the policy committee, and we take a better look at it, because making those changes just based on CDC recommendations is not strong enough, in my mind. And we really need to take into consideration the expertise of our administrators that talk in terms of the financial.
No, and that's what I agree to, yeah.
So I would say, let's just send it back, and let's do the homework so people can understand what it means. But let's make sure that we're not going to encumber the staff more and cost ourselves more through some of the language we put in our policies. So, yeah, kick that one back to policy. That's 533.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent?
So I would just add on the process time for the committee, bring it back. I know that we've had at least a couple principals present on how they're running school lunch differently and the time differently, and they're incorporating activity into it. I've also been over to, for sure, Armstrong High School, where they have different seating when it's nice outside, and in fact, have opened up their open space, grass area for that. So my only suggestion for the policy committee to look at is, one, talk to the principals, find out, and make sure that it's crossed K-12, that this would be appropriate. And the second thing would be, the minute we start putting time requirements on this type of stuff, we end up limit, in my experience, we end up limiting what we can do and tying the hands of our buildings based, because if you put a blanket statement of 20 minutes a day, just as you're stating, what happens when? Right, we're on a field trip. Now you have to get into exceptions. Now you have to, because you're, so just anyway, make sure that we're talking with our principals when we're doing the review of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Holmes?
Yeah, and I agree, and I appreciate those points. And the cost was brought up, so I think this is great information for the policy to dive into. And I just want to, you know, not look at it as a negative. There's not, not trying to be a limitation. It's families that have come, students who have come, saying they're not getting through the lines, my kid's not even being able to eat. So my purpose in bringing that up is the exact opposite of what you just mentioned. I don't want to limit anybody. I want to make sure our students are getting time to eat their lunch, and we're getting through. We've had some challenges that have been talked through. So I think this is a great time, since this is up, that we can review it in policy. So thanks for your feedback.
Super. Thank you, everybody. We'll send that back. All right. We're all the way through the second page, Letter K, Ad Hoc Safety and Security Committee Report. Do you have a report?
Do you want to take it, Kim?
Go for it. Director Long?
Well, my report would just be the report that I gave last time. We still have not received any dates of, as to when our committee can meet. And we're still waiting for a draft from MIC. So that date of May 30th has come and gone. So that's the report I gave last time, it's still the same.
Thank you. Administrator reports?
I'll just add to that. We did get a review from MIC yesterday, I believe. And I just want to be sure that I get a chance to talk to Assistant Superintendent before that, and then find a time to schedule a meeting.
Thank you. Good. All right. That moves us to Letter K, Administrative Reports. Director Stallow?
I don't believe there are any administrative reports this evening. Thank you.
All righty. That takes us to the Consent Agenda. Items on the Consent Agenda are routine in nature and are enacted in one resolution, unless any item from the Consent Agenda can be removed by a board member. Otherwise, we will vote on them all in one resolution. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? Director Holmes?
I'd like to go ahead and pull the K through 5 English Language Arts curriculum, as well as the legal counsel appointment before approval of it.
Pull the K through 5.
Listen.
English Language Arts. And appointment of legal counsel. Then will you move acceptance of the Consent Agenda without those two items?
I'll move that, just that way.
Senator, I'm just, Senator, sorry I promoted you. Director Basset?
I'll move it based on what she, you know, what you're excluding.
Okay. So Director Basset has moved approval of the Consent Agenda minus the K-12. What was it, K-5?
K-5 English Language Arts Curriculum Review.
Arts and appointment of legal counsel. And Director Bowman?
I have a question. Are we going to vote, and if we're going to pull these things?
And then we'll vote on them separately.
So we're just going to vote, we're going to pull these and then vote on them separately? Is that the plan?
So we're voting on the Consent Agenda minus them, and then we'll vote on, and then we'll vote on the other one of them.
All right. Great, if there hasn't been a second, I'll provide one.
We got a second from Director Bowman? Were you a second?
Yeah.
Okay, so moved by Director Basset, seconded by Director Bowman. This is a voice vote on the Consent Agenda minus two items.
Consent Agenda is roll call.
That's what I meant, that's why I called on you, sorry.
Sorry about that. There's a difference. All right, I'm prepared and ready to do this. Director Basset?
Yes.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans Becker?
Yes.
Director Hellenbrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
Yes.
Director Long?
Yeah.
Director Wu To?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Okay. Now, we will need to have a motion about the K-5 English Language Arts curriculum purchase. You have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Moved by Hellenbrand?
Second.
Seconded by?
Bowman.
I knew that. Bowman? Director Holmes?
You got your first and your second, correct?
I did. Yes.
So we spoke about this at the business meeting, or we were presented to, and there wasn't, obviously, a vote at that time. But this is a rule of the school board, so I think it would have been more appropriate outside of the Consent Agenda. And then after further reflection on it, I just, and I can't, if it was a 50-50 toss-up, and, you know, what was said at the presentation, I'm going to lean in towards supporting the EL education based off of the teacher's support that it received and the data that we had provided to us. That's why I pulled it.
Thank you. So basically, what you're saying is you are voting no on the?
I will be voting no on this, and I would have, yes, before I would have moved approval on EL education. But I would like to see this as a formal vote. This approving curriculum for the school district is a large initiative, so it shouldn't be going through, in my opinion, in the Consent Agenda.
Okay. Good point. All right. I don't see any other hands up. So we have a motion to approve the K-5 Language Arts Curriculum. And I heard groan, did you want to say something?
I'm just remembering a communication that I did receive. Just wondering, Superintendent, can you share with me kind of how, just a snippet about the review of the curriculum?
Actually, Matt, would you be willing to come up and share that?
Okay, and as he's coming up, I'll just say, because we don't have a systems accountability as such, and I know I'm calling the wrong thing. I mean, they used to look at those things, curriculum, which included community, all of that. And I actually had gotten some feedback that there wasn't enough time for people to take a look at it. And I know I myself, I was on a trip, and it came up that it was going to, because I would have came up to take a look, you know, but I was out of town when it was reviewed. So I'm interested to hear more about it, because I think it is a big deal.
What would you?
I'm happy to answer any questions. If you were doing a presentation about this new curriculum, what would be the top line that you would talk about?
I would say that with this adoption, we were constrained by the state of Minnesota and the REED Act. We had two options available to us if we wished to use state aid money. We had Win Wisdom, and we had EL education. Both products are based on a structured literacy approach, which is radically different than the English Language Arts Curricular Resources over the last 15 to 20 years. We convened a literacy committee that had about 50 different members on it, who did a very deep analysis of both products. They came out nearly half and half. Our teachers leaned more, just general education teachers, leaned more towards EL education. Our administrators leaned very heavily towards Win Wisdom. Our curriculum instruction team was unanimous in that, and our achievement integration team, and very specifically, our Indian Ed team was 100% in favor of Win Wisdom.
Thank you.
I think both products are solid. They both said to us that you're going to do well either way. Our lean was that, and that's the direction that we went. So that was the rationale.
Thank you for just the quick update and reminder. Appreciate it.
Okay. See no more hands. This is a roll call vote to accept the English Language Arts recommendation.
I am ready. Director Basset?
Yes.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans Becker?
Yes.
Director Hellenbrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
No.
Director Long?
No.
Director Wu To?
Yes.
Five two.
Five in favor, two opposed. We have accepted the Language Arts Curriculum. The next item that was pulled from the Consent Agenda is the appointment of legal counsel. And so let me get to that. And this is another routine. See. Do I have a motion to appoint legal counsel?
A move of approval.
Thank you. Oh, there it is, got it. Okay. And there are several law firms in there that we would be approving. It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, moved by Bowman. Bowman, seconded by Hellenbrand. Director Holmes?
Chair, as I have expressed to you a couple of times, I've really wanted to have a conversation about attorney and board views, and how those parameters have been put in place, what we've agreed upon, how it was determined that counsel was going to be here at every meeting. I know there's been other expressions of that, too. Also, just in terms of school representation versus other areas of concern that have come up, that's not clear, and I've expressed all of this more than once. And so I don't feel comfortable supporting these, not knowing what the support is to the school board and how questions, concerns are being addressed, when counsel is being conducted for investigations or something that the chair deems necessary. We don't have that nailed down as a board, so I cannot support this. And it's something that I've asked for numerous times. I don't know where the hiccup is. I don't know if this is, I know it has been supported by other board members, too, and I don't know why this is a scary topic to talk, take on as a board.
Director Long?
Yeah, I have had concerns, too, about how we're choosing to use these attorneys. Also, you know, it seems like, you know, we have this list here of who is authorized to contact them, and we've had board members who aren't on that authorized list to freely use certain attorneys' names, and they'll be contacting them for this, and they'll be contacting them for that. So I'm just really concerned about how we're choosing to use them. You know, even today at this board meeting and at the last board meeting, it seems like, there seem to be certain attorneys that are used to go after and silence certain school board members and not others. You know, I see the eye contact going back and forth. Last time, the last school board meeting that we had, there was a stop her that was actually said about another board member to an attorney. And so I'm just starting to get really concerned about what it is that we're choosing to do, the fees that this is causing, and the privilege that it is creating.
Director Hellenbrand?
And I think that, you know, you guys both spoke to concerns that you have, and I appreciate those, but I think that they're separate from that the school board needs to have representation. The second question is how we use that representation. But we can't be without legal representation, because legal things arise quite frequently, as you know. So I just want to say that those are two separate conversations. I understand why you brought it up, because it's related, but I don't think it's related to this vote.
Thank you. Director Basset?
Well, I just wanted to say that historically, the district has always had several attorney firms that represent the district. I think that your distinction, Director Hellenbrand, was a good one. There may be some other conversations that we need to have. And so I think since we're talking about it here in the public forum, I guess I hear Director Holmes saying she'd like to have that conversation. So, you know, I mean, and so I don't hear anybody saying no. I mean, that's something that would come to Chair and Vice Chair to plot on a work session or something, you know. And so I guess we'll leave it at that, because, you know. But I will say, though, that I do believe that when the board is meeting, the board is meeting. And I believe that the skill level of this board is, if it's not already there, it's approaching a place where the board can manage its own affairs at the board table, for goodness sake. We're just passing resolutions. I think there was some gray area for a little while, but I think we're going down the right direction. I think having attorneys insert themselves into our discussion is not helpful. I, you know, having served for a number of years, and some of you have too, in different bodies, not just the school board, but having served in different bodies, I've never served on a board where in the middle of the conversation of the board members, an attorney inserts themselves. I just have never experienced that, and I think it's inappropriate. You know, if it's not something, if it's not a crisis, if there's not something, somebody's not doing something that's illegal or something's going on, there is no place for that in, in far as, I'm concerned. And if we need to go get some better Robert's Rules of Order training, so we know what to do when, because all of the boards I've ever served on, you know, boards would ever just manage just manage themselves, you know, and that's been twenty-two years. We never had head of an attorney referee. And, and I think that we're better than that, and I think we can get past that, and I think it's, I, I am concerned about the amount of cost, and more than that, then you learn how to get along with each other. I mean, that's, we always had to do it, and so we did it. So I just think that that's important, you know?
Thank you. Director Holmes?
Yeah, Director Hillenbrand, I'm in agreement that they're two separate conversations, but I think where the hiccup is for me is I've been trying to ask for those conversations for quite some time, and I don't know where the, the problem is, because they're conversations the board needs to have, um, especially with our oversight responsibilities and potential conflicts of interest. Um, so I guess I'm asking, when is that conversation going to be had, and why hasn't it? Because I don't, I, I understand the legal implications of it, um, but I can approve because one of these firms has been stated that it's representing the school board, or counsel here has stated that, um, but you can't move forward with a counsel that there are questions around.
I just need to make, so, do we have the motion? And second? We're ready to vote now, because I just know other hands. Okay, and this is a roll call vote.
It is.
We're voting.
And I am.
Voting on approval of legal counsel.
All right, I am ready for this. Uh, Director Bassett?
Yeah.
Director Bowman votes yes. Uh, Chair Evans Becker?
Yes.
Director Hillenbrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
No.
Director Long?
No.
Director Wu To?
Yes.
Motion prevails, five two.
Five two, we have appointed legal counsel. Okay, let's see where we're going now. We are all the way down to board reports.
Yay.
And I'm going to start with, um, Director Bowman, because we had listening time tonight. Are you, would you be ready?
Oh, I just, uh, the, the only reports I will give is the, I'm going to waive any other reports in, in, because of the timing and because we have so much work at work session tonight, but I will give you, I have my notes for tonight's, um, listening session. We had twelve individuals that spoke. We had one representing a union that was wondering when the school nutrition bargaining unit was going to begin. We had two that talked from SEIU that spoke of custodial issues. We had six that spoke to the family literacy program, you know, in favor of keeping the program. We had two that spoke in, uh, on the topics of equity and school board policies, and we had one that requested that board members learn to get along.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, Director Hillenbrand?
Um, I will waive my report.
Okay. Director Long?
Um, I do have an update from District 287. Uh, so their Destination Imagination, they are the district that has been putting it on for the state of Minnesota for the last couple of years. Um, this, uh, last one that they had, only three districts participated in it out of, I believe there are fourteen districts, uh, that are member districts with, uh, 287. Um, it has now, since there are only three districts that are participating, Robbinsdale being one of them, um, it is to the point that they cannot, uh, sustain it and continue to put that on. Um, the superintendent of 287 said that she did reach out to all of the other superintendents uh, within, uh, the member district and had a conversation with them. Uh, the other districts who are not using it, uh, are asking why do they need to contribute to this if their district is not utilizing it, so then that would mean a huge, uh, cost burden on the three districts who are continuing to use it if it did continue to go on. Um, so because of that, uh, that program will no longer go on. If people do want to go to nationals, they'll have to go to Wisconsin for those nationals. Uh, there is, the person who, uh, currently runs that program within District 287 will be retiring. Uh, she has said that she is willing to, um, train anybody in on the materials if they would like that information. It was shared to, by the Hopkins School District, uh, one of their school board members, that they've kind of incorporated, uh, Destination Imagination into kind of their school day, um, and so they kind of use those materials regularly, uh, because they have incorporated into their school day.
Thank you. Alrighty, me, I'm passing. Director, uh, Director Holmes? No report. Director Bassett?
Well, I did a lot of things, but I'm going to pass too.
Thank you. Director Wu To?
No report.
All right, that brings us to, uh, future events, we'll scroll, can I have a move to adjourn?
A move.
It's been moved, seconded by Director Wu To. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If you say nay, we are adjourned.
Aye, aye, thank you.
We will, it is nine seventeen? Nine twenty-five? Nine, we'll reg, we, we'll regroup.
And we're back. Okay. I'm going to start the school board, oops, wrong page. Study-work session. I'm going to have as a back of board chair and we're going to go from, um, just ready.
Who's talking?
I'm Helen Bass, I'm on the school board.
Kaye Wood, you're a school boarder.
Amy over, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Anthony Wells, Executive Director of Community Education, Athletics, and Exchanges.
Kim Holm, School Board.
Bob, the Assistant Superintendent.
Caroline Long, Vice Chair.
Aviva Holland-Brian, School Board.
Teri Callis, Superintendent.
Brittany Wallman.
Clark.
Molly Olson, Assistant to the Superintendent and School Board.
David Mark, Community Member, Observer.
Thank you. Alright. School Board Professional Development. Everybody gave input on the topics they would like. I sent them out. People ranked them and I sent out the results of that ranking. Interestingly enough, three items each got four, which would be a majority, and no other item even got three. So it looked like it was fairly clear. And so I asked the superintendent to contact the people involved, who would be involved in those trainings, to see if they're available. And we'll get back to you when we know more. Does anybody have any questions? Director Holm.
Well, we know the cost.
Probably will, but not yet.
Yeah, because I'm asking so that that can be asked ahead of time, the cost.
She said, well, we know the cost.
Oh.
Okay. Thank you. That was easy enough. Oh, Director Bassett.
I'm sorry. Are you, do you have any, I mean, should there be a discussion about when, who, where? I mean, all that, or is that premature?
We know when. Yes? It's July.
Oh, you, oh, you, I'm reading that same day?
Well, we have a Tuesday night. Yeah, we have a Tuesday night. Okay. We have Tuesday night and a Wednesday from like nine till three.
What?
Well, so it will take place in there and reasonably speaking, I think, actually, we can do well to get it all in if our people are all available. Director Bassett?
Well, I mean, actually, the fact that we have the two dates on the calendar, yeah. But I, I was wondering, because we're talking about three different things, that really was my point. Not, you know, and so that's unknown at this moment.
Right, I thought it would work.
Okay.
If they're all three available, we can get all three in and have a robust learning time together. Okay? Well, that did not take 10 minutes. The dates, the dates are in July. I believe we have a school board meeting on the 21st and on Monday, and then the 22nd, Tuesday night, starting like at five. Pardon me? Did I go wrong?
Yeah, I'm going to get that.
Alright, I'll look at my actual.
I think there was a, I think there was a calendar invite that went to everyone. Yes, it's at nine o'clock.
Okay, so Tuesday, the 22nd, from six till nine. And then Wednesday, the 23rd, nine AM till four PM. And that says boardroom, so you'll know where by this evening. Okay? Well, that didn't take 10 minutes, let's move right along. School Board Parking Lot, I really would like us to be able to have a parking lot for things that we want to discuss as a group, if the majority of the board wants to talk about it. Four people say, yes, we want to talk about it, we put that in the parking lot. And as soon as we get time, we move that up into a work session or have a discussion. I know that Quiz Bowl had a majority of people wanting it. I did talk to Mike Freiberg and he said the kids will do it anytime this summer or even into the fall because none of them are graduating. I asked if he could give us a few sample questions, just to help us out a little bit. And he thought he could do that. So he said it's general knowledge and trivia. And so that is on our parking lot, because we don't know when we're going to be doing that. But when other items come up, so he said, I really think we need to talk about this, we just say, are there four people that would like to have a parking lot, we put it in the parking lot. Director Holm?
Why four people?
It's a majority.
Why not Robert's rules?
What's Robert's rules?
Three.
I was thinking it was, a majority of the board wanted to have it on the top line. You would feel more comfortable with three people trying to talk about it?
Yeah.
It's our parking lot. Director Holmes?
I kind of view the parking lot as an all-encompassing, it shouldn't be tracked necessarily by four or three. It's directors sharing ideas. And then it's prioritized based on agendas. I don't think you need to fax something off for any particular reason. And I'm going to bring it up again. I created a spreadsheet long ago when I was Vice Chair. And I'm willing to turn it over to whoever will utilize it because it lists different phases. And the reason it did that is because we might be talking, I know there was a director who talked about green energy before I was even on this board. There were many iterations of that and different steps were taken at certain schools. And what this document does is tracks the different pieces of it. So you can see it was brought up and here's what we're doing so far. So it doesn't disappear off the radar. It really should be an all-encompassing document that brings the voices of the board to a place where we can all review it. So I don't think it needs to be monitored by four people, yes, or four, you know, it, it, whoever's in general should be tracking questions. And then if somebody brings something up, just, I categorized it by budget issues, general communication. It's a document that just brings a little organization to it. Because this goes back to, we had good points come up before, you know, how much does it actually cost to have your kid in school? And it wasn't like, it was encompassing activity fees and winter gear or AP tests, you know, I mean, so I started tracking all of that when I was Vice Chair, just so it doesn't fall off the radar. Because we've really got to be paying attention to one another and we don't have valid points to bring up and it might fall in discussions here or there, but it updates. We didn't directly talk about it in a work session, but we covered this piece on, you know, this committee or this policy or whatever. And then so people can realize they're being heard and they can know where it is in that process and if they want to try to advance it, whatever their topic is, to the next step. And Caroline's point, it only does take three, three board members to schedule a meeting, so I think that's, is that where you're going with it?
I'm okay with three. That's a little more involved than I was thinking, but I don't think that's bad. So if you want to like, just share with, put it in a shared file?
I, yep, it's there.
It's in the shared file?
I don't know, I'll look at it and see what the thing is, but it's, maybe you'll find it useful and it helps with questions that come up during meetings too, or people requesting whatever.
Okay, so tool. In the meantime, if somebody wants something in the parking lot, like a long time ago, it was bell times or bus times or that sort of thing. And it moved up in interest and finally got, things were done. So whatever you're thinking, if you want something in the parking lot, let us know.
Okay.
Director Bassett?
So while we're talking about the parking lot, that has to be differentiated from the, you know, requests for something to be on in a work session event. And I think that that is, that's an distinction that I, I perhaps more clarification on. Because having something, I, I just think that we should be talking about, whether if it's a candidate set up item or anything, if it's something that really has a significant impact to the district and everybody's not going to think of everything at the same time. You know, I don't need four people, if somebody raises something as a valid point, I, we don't need, we should need three votes or two votes or anything. We should just realize the importance of the issue. I think the importance of the issue and the timing of the issue should drive what goes on in the agenda. And, and I might say, when I talk about, we're talking about parking lot, so I want a goal field, but I would like us to talk about the agenda set, and I think I put that, and I put that on a high priority.
Okay. Okay. Alright, oh, Director Holm?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow mine up with, yeah, I would prefer whatever goes in the parking lot, you know, if somebody wants to talk about it, to put it in there because clearly that's information that they need to help them make decisions and we all learn differently. So, but I would be willing to manage. To what?
To manage the document.
I don't care, you want me to manage it?
Well, I mean, are you thinking it's going to be a shared document?
I mean, I would assume everybody would need to see it, but I don't know that we want everybody writing in it. Somebody, you know, they could all be viewers possibly. Because we don't want to break open meeting laws, but then one person should be.
Or if you and I are having any possibilities, but everybody can see the parking lot?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, maybe we can talk about that at another agenda setting. Okay. This brings us to the Superintendent's end of year evaluation discussion. Do I need to go get?
Okay, before we start, I just want to make sure.
We should have about 30 minutes for sure, or?
Okay. Hopefully not that. But thanks for giving it and I'll expect you.
So we're starting with the presentation from our Superintendent. And then after the presentation, we will go into closed session. Kev?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, I think it's important, thank you for the opportunity tonight. I think it's important that I have an opportunity to, in an open meeting, share my goals, progress, and some comments. I have chosen to, for this review, to do a closed session review. So I think it's important in an open meeting that I get a chance to do this. So, just over a year ago, I interviewed and was offered the position of leading Robbinsdale Area Schools in the Office of the Superintendent. During my interview, board members and community members heard about my work, my values and beliefs, and both what and how I would lead Robbinsdale to a better place. I knew some of the challenges facing the district at that time and I embraced the opportunity to learn and lead. What I know to be true is I can only serve in a district that aligns with my values. And that's why at the beginning of every meeting I convene, I ground the group in our mission, our purpose, and the reason we get up. I said yes, a year ago, to District 281, while the challenges are greater than I ever could have imagined. And we have a long way to go to improve student outcomes and the school district. I'm ending this first year really proud of the amazing people who come together for our students around the shared goal of improving Robbinsdale Area Schools. And I'm really proud of how I've entered the district and led the work. During the rest of this presentation, I'll share my goals and the evaluation elements that were shared with and agreed upon by the board. There are three overarching goals. Each goal has two to three specific areas of focus that, that I'll speak to and then showcase the evidence of performance. Additionally, I'll briefly address my assessment and goal attainment and impact. So, the first goal was to establish leadership and communication to improve district culture, to improve district culture, climate, and trust. From day one, it was apparent to me, I'd been watching school board meetings and studying this district for a year. And from day one, it was apparent, I knew rebuilding trust with all members of our district community and strengthening the relationships would be foundational to not mine success, but our collective success. This goal is about how I needed to show up and how I have shown up. With purpose, with presence, and with deep respect for the people and the communities that we serve. The first focus area to achieve goal one was, the Superintendent will implement an entry plan focused on building relationships with internal and external stakeholders that involves meeting with and/or visiting at least 30 different stakeholder groups before December 15th, 2004. The foundation of these interactions was to listen, to learn, to leverage talent so that I could lead well. That entry plan wasn't just a checklist for me. It was a commitment to engage and invest immediately with our community, to show up, to learn, to center the voices of our students, staff, families, and partners. I exceeded the goal of meeting with 30 different groups before December, December by a large margin and that is outlined in the evidence that I provided to the board. What I heard when I listened helped me learn what was needed and allowed me to leverage talent from students, staff leaders, and our community to set the tone and the strategy of what was needed in my leadership to be in service to our students. The themes of the data collected early in my tenure were shared with leaders and it was used early in the year to prioritize goals and action plans as we started this school year. The second focus area of establishing leadership and communication to improve district culture, climate, and trust was, quote, "The Superintendent will engage with internal and external stakeholders to ensure district communication, resources, and information regarding the capital projects levy renewal is well known in the community." The school district's role in a levy campaign is to provide factual information and awareness of the ballot request. And as the Superintendent, I took that role seriously as I met with civic groups, staff, PTOs, community groups, and ensured our communication was transparent and accessible. This is not my first superintendency. This was not my first levy campaign. And I know what it takes from the leader of a school district to ensure that they are visible in the community, answering questions, providing input and information so that questions are asked and people understand the ask from the district. It's a challenge to come into a new super, or to a new school district as a new superintendent with a levy request on the ballot four months after I started. This opportunity also provided me an opportunity to, and an excellent purpose, to immediately meet many people in the community. I achieved this goal ensuring materials were clear, accessible to all families, and widely shared by the school district. Additionally, I met this goal by meeting with many groups of people through communication, interviews, meetings, in order to be present, to answer questions, and bring awareness to the levy request. Again, all of those meetings are documented in the materials that I provided. The third focus of goal one, of establishing leadership and communication to improve district culture, climate, and trust, was that by the end of the year, Superintendent will deliver to the board a document that will include a calendar of school visits, an overview of the activities that took place during these visits, and the perceived impact that these visits had on the buildings that were visited. I visited all schools multiple times. You all know this because in almost a weekly summary, you know where I've been and what I've done. Attended student events and meetings and my calendar shows 247 school visits throughout the year. Being present in schools and at events isn't just symbolic. It helps me understand what's working and what needs support. It builds relationships. It shows our students and staff that they matter. It builds trust. And it reminds me every single time I get there, why I'm here. And it's because of the 10,264 students that we serve and the adults who support them every day. So while I provide the evidence of performance established and outlined in each focus area goal one to show that I've met and exceeded the goals, I realized that establishing leadership and communication to improve district culture, climate, and trust demands constant and ongoing focus, attention, and commitment. In these first 11 months, I've helped stabilize some of the chaos and uncertainty that was present when I entered through every conversation, even some really hard ones. I was able to articulate a collective path forward and by showing up and doing what I said I was going to do, in the way that I said I was going to do it, trust is beginning to be restored, so the process of healing and moving forward collectively can occur. The second goal was to provide leadership to align systems and create and implement a district system of continuous improvement, which you saw just a sample of tonight and kind of the result as it outlined next year's strategic priorities. This goal is about how we connect our mission to our systems. It's about clarity, alignment, and ensuring that all arrows and all of us are pointed in the same direction. It's also about high expectations and accountability and creating a culture of excellence because that's what our kids deserve. It's not just what we say we value, it's how we show those values every day and the way we lead, plan, and support our schools, our staff, and our students. The first focus to achieve goal two was stated, the Superintendent will serve as a champion for the school district mission and the rediscover RDL strategic plan. I made a promise that in 100% of presentations and speeches with leader, staff, parent groups, and the larger community, I'll lead with and ground groups in our core purpose and strategic plan. Additionally, I will make sure that I teach and expect our leaders to know the strategic plan and hopefully that they do the same with their staff. As I told leaders last- As I told leaders last Tuesday, when we all met for the full day and members of the student, the school's instructional leadership team meetings on Thursday, my expectation for all staff to be able to recite the mission has nothing to do with automaticity and memorization. For me, it's if they know it and they say it, I hope that they begin to feel it. Because in order for our ten thousand two hundred plus students to achieve success, every single one of the adults needs to understand the daily impact they have on the lives of our kids and I'm ensuring that that mission comes to life. So I don't know that every staff member has the mission memorized. That wasn't my goal, right? But I met and exceeded this goal by bringing awareness and rallying our staff around the mission. From site visits to board presentations, I start with our purpose and our mission, which is, as you all know, to inspire energy. When we constantly lift up these strategic commitments, they become a part of our culture. This is something that I promise I will do every day that I am serving in this community and every meeting that I convene. The second focus area, whoops, sorry. The second focus area in goal two stated, the superintendent will design a district system of continuous improvement through the collaborative development of the following foundational materials to align systems and lead the implementation for increased accountability. Strategic priority work, the school board working document, the district scorecard, district continuous improvement plans. Actually, that should be department's continuous improvement plans, school improvement plans, district professional development plans and our professional area communities. And the evidence will be each documented system being developed throughout the year with the beginning stages of implementation being started throughout the year. Board members first saw the visual that I don't have up here, but you've seen it multiple times. You first saw that last July and through the hard work of our district leaders and staff across the district, this system was created and implemented, demonstrating that this goal was met and exceeded. A system of continuous improvement starts with a culture of continuous improvement. And that culture is far more difficult to change than it is to create documents and processes. You've heard me tell the story a number of times about the fake grass that was outside this building when I came for the interview. For me, the fake grass represents a shortcut. It represents an attitude and expectation that this is good enough. It represented to me a notion that our district, our kids don't deserve better. I believe that in order to create a culture of continuous improvement, we first needed to establish expectations of excellence. Excellence in operations, excellence in academics and excellence in leadership. I have high expectations of myself and of those who serve in public education. I also know that with high expectations, there must be high levels of support. I raise the bar through my expectations of leaders and by hiring new leaders with equally high expectations. I lead with urgency through shared leadership and collaboration. And what I've found is that many people have embraced the notion that our students deserve excellence and that we must do better now. They've rolled up their sleeves, they've worked on priority teams, they've said yes, but we've asked them to serve on committees. They have rallied around the school improvement plan plans and their PLC goals. I've also found that there are people who are uncomfortable with change. They're uncomfortable with accountability and high expectations, especially if they have not been held to that level of performance in the past. I will not apologize for high expectations for our staff or our students. And I know that part of the system for high expectations is ensuring that those high levels of support continue continually. We can't achieve our goals through intention alone and this work gave us, so I just want to go back to that last slide. Again, I have documented all of those systems that I said we would create. Some of them were in place and we are in the process of revising and making them better. But this is all, this was all accomplished. So again, we can't achieve our goals through intention alone. The work gave us structure and clarity we needed to move from vision to action and from actions to results. The impact of this system is that we have an aligned path forward and an expectation about our beliefs and work. We're creating a culture where everyone understands the why and has the tools for the how and is supported in making progress. And that's the power of aligned systems and shared accountability. Strong systems need strong leaders. And as the superintendent, that needed to be one of my focus areas. So goal three was to promote leadership capacity building for increasing excellence in academics and operations. This goal focused on building the capacity of our team so that excellence in academics and operations could become the norm and not the exception. The first goal area was leadership development structural, the analyze for efficiency and changes were made for efficient and effective alignment, communication and coordinated coordination of district priority work. The goal of creating a culture of empowering all leaders and aligning work toward district priorities resulted in new meeting, new meeting structures and leadership groups. And each meeting was designed with clear purposes and outcomes for each group, meeting agendas and increased collaboration among and between the groups. Again, I met and exceeded this, this goal through intentional coordination. This was more than just professional development for our leaders. It was again about clarity, beginning to be really clear about what we expect, being really clear about what we need to do in order to support the leaders in that and being clear in building systems that make this sustainable. The second focus area to achieve goal three was the superintendent will lead for equity and equitable student outcomes. Evidence of this will be the restructuring and purpose of the work of the building equity teams to align to the work of the building instructional leadership teams and the MTSS teams and ensuring the goals of the school improvement plans. So again, lots of coordination, lots of different teams working on this. The increased level of collaboration and breaking down the silos helped through leaders and systems to consistency, support and trust. The goal was met and we will continue in earnest to leverage alignment, collaboration and coordination to support the work. This year, we were clear about our priorities and this helped to define and focus the work, make sure we'll be able to be, go deeper in the implementation of those systems. The third focus area was that the superintendent will assess the current organizational chart to explore efficiencies and talent alignment for both short and long term organizational restructuring. It's important to have an organizational structure for collaboration to ensure position alignment with clear roles and the right people doing those roles. I met and exceeded this goal with both some immediate and short term decisions for restructuring and through the larger departmental reorganizations that reduced the budget at the ESC by over two million dollars and will provide a more efficient and aligned system moving forward. Sorry. The final area to achieve goal three, again, actually, yeah, to promote leadership is the superintendent will assess the current status of district operations and determine a community engagement process to begin long term planning and decision making around success indicators for students, academic program in line to what students need, enrollment and building capacities, study and long range facility planning. Again, these goals were established in late summer and early fall before, an early fall, I'm sorry, before the knowledge of the twenty-one million dollar deficit. The evidence of meetings and I would say far exceeded the school has been the reimagine RDL Vision 2030, where we had over seventeen thousand different voices to date engaged. Our team has created and is implementing a robust community engagement process where we are co-creating a better future for Robbins Delary Schools together. This is the information that we need as we continue our work next year. Sorry, I kind of. I think I didn't advance the slides. Sorry about that. We just talked about that. All right, lastly, on the impact of goal three, when leaders are empowered and supported, they lead with purpose. The energy spreads to classrooms, to students and to results. And this is how we build a system that expects and sustains excellence. So this year for me was about listening, learning and laying the foundation. We honored what's working, we addressed what needs to improve and we made it clear that RDL's future is something that we need to build together. Tonight is a celebration of the collective work of our staff, leaders, students and community. I am very proud of our work. And while these goals represent only a small portion of the work that I've done this year, I'm proud of the evidence I compiled demonstrating goal attainment. I am extremely grateful to the team that has supported me and I look forward to all that is next. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Looking at what happens next. Next we have to go into closed session, right? Judge Lom?
Is it possible to ask any questions? We do want to come back in? Ask, you want to? I would like the slides because we might want to refer to them.
So, so do you want to refer to the slides?
Could we have access or a copy of the slides in case we want to refer to them in our discussion? Thanks.
Or just send that to us? Perfect. All right, in that case, this work session or coffee session depending is now concluded and we are going to move into a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero five, subdivision three A, superintendent end of year evaluation. It will begin five minutes after we conclude this work session and we are leaving.
And will we be coming back here to discuss anything or are we just?
Will we be, will we be in here and the door is closed?
I thought we'd be in here and the door is closed.
Yeah.
Uh, Judge Holmes?
You asking about if we're going to discuss as a board that what, what comes next at when we're in here?
Um, no, I'm just discussing the location at this moment.
I'm just asking if we're coming back into an open meeting that's going to be televised for any conclusions or if that will be saved for the next board meeting? That's what I'm wondering.
I think according to our rules, it is in two weeks of the next board meeting.
Great, that's what I wanted to know.
Two weeks of the next board meeting.
A summary statement will be produced. A summary statement will be produced at that meeting.
I think that's.
Stream this table's down.
Sure, yeah, five minutes.
Yeah.
I'm sure you've seen coming to.